All right, I will call this meeting to order. Good afternoon. Welcome to our 4:00 PM November 29th, 2022, special meeting of the Santa Cruz City Council. And I would like to ask the clerk to please call roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Calentari Johnson.
Present.
Golda.
Present.
Cummings.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Vice Mayor Watkins.
Here.
And Mayor Briner.
Present, thank you. First up on our agenda is the consent agenda. These... I'll ask the city's...
We're not required to have oral communications in a special meeting.
We will...
We're not required to, and it's not agendized, so we don't have oral communication tonight.
I'd be happy to connect with you outside of this meeting. I'm going to continue with the agenda. Our next regularly scheduled meeting, December 13th, will have oral communications. Thank you. First up is our consent agenda. These items are number one and two on our agenda. For members of the public who are streaming this meeting and joining us virtually, now is the time to call in if you'd like to comment on items one or two on the agenda. Instructions will be on your screen. Please remember to mute your streaming device and raise your hand either by dialing *9 on your phone or selecting Raise Hand in the webinar controls on your computer. If you're joining us here in person, you may line up here to the right of the dais, my left, and you can sign in at the clipboard, but it's not required. All items will be acted upon in one motion unless an item is pulled by a council member for further discussions. Are any council members... Are there any council members who wish to comment on or pull any items? Okay, Councilmember Golda has a comment on number two. Golda, okay. Okay, Councilmember Cummings has a comment on one. And let me just check. We have one council member joining us virtually. Go back to that screen. Make sure, Councilmember Calentari Johnson, your hand's not raised. I don't want to forget about you there. Okay, thank you. All right, so let's go to our first comment. Councilmember Golda, comment on item number two.
Thank you.
Do you want to read what that is?
So this is the resolution, excuse me, to the purchase of a Type 1 fire engine. And I just want to say that I'm happy that we're purchasing this. I know that we've been having to borrow one from a neighboring agency. And I'm just wanting, I'm hoping that we have a replacement plan because it's a lot more money to be borrowing them than to have a replacement plan in place for the years to come. They don't, they don't last, you know, more than 10, 20 years. And so we, I hope there's a replacement plan for the next, there's more than one engine in the department, right? So that solves though. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cummings, you have a comment on item number one.
Yeah, this, as just preface, I lost my voice because I'm getting over a cold. So if you can't hear me that well, I apologize. This is City Council and Community's support of the UC Academic Workers' Strike and Fair UC Now Bargaining Request. And as a former grad student, first I want to just thank all the grad students for their hard work on this. Santa Cruz and many of the communities that have UCs are very costly and expensive for graduate students to live in and pushing for fair contracts that allow people to have living wages while they're going to school and working at the UCs and trying to get their degrees, I think is something that we've supported in the past. And I'm thankful for the UC graduate students for bringing this to our attention and also for the support of council in previous years and for the council members who've helped us on the agenda.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, I will bring it out to public comment. And let's see, I will just check to see if anybody virtually has their hand raised. The name, I am watching you. Go ahead and press *6 to unmute yourself.
Okay, thank you. I support union rights to bargain for better pay and benefits for their workers. However, public education unions have a bad record of taking member dues and sending them off as political contributions. Hundreds of millions, some of which went to lobbying for closed schools and mandatory masks for children and no abnormal mortal risk from COVID. It punished students horribly, possibly permanently, while the teachers' unions seemed to be very unconcerned. I preface here by saying I have a very low opinion of UCIC and of public education unions. You should be saying nothing and let the parties negotiate. But no, the progressives aren't interested in that. They are interested in collectivism in all its forms. You, the city administrators, are supposed to represent the entire public. That includes the individual right not to use collective bargaining. Apparently, that also doesn't include students or taxpayers that would pay for these demands. This is more like one government entity in the peanut gallery urging a milking of that cash cow known as the public ever harder. The government is a no-competition monopoly and is not a free market. Because of that, all government administrators need careful budget examination for fair spending and fair comparison as to the private sector, which seems the appropriate line to hold for me. I read a lot of these demands as outrageous and things the private sector would never agree to. Free transit passes, subsidies for the purchase of e-bikes, full childcare, removal of foreign worker fees, no justification job security, removal of discipline authority to third parties. Hello, California has at-will employment in the private sector. I have no opinion on the salaries, but the private sector would consider many of these people interns or newbie college grads at the bottom of the pay scale for some of those kinds of jobs. Doesn't college tuition cost enough? Haven't students taken on enough crippling debt for them to attend? The public's willingness to pay is always a question when involving the government. The cost of living is irrelevant. Thanks. Is that three minutes?
Thank you. I will now go to our next member of the public here in person. Hi, welcome.
Hi there. My name is Sam Hughes. I'm a PhD candidate up in Santa Cruz in the Psychology Department. I'm here to speak on behalf of both myself and my 48,000 other colleagues that are on strike. We've been on strike for the past 16 days trying to argue in favor of fair bargaining practices at the bargaining table. So far, there have been six complaints that have been sent to the Public Employment Relations Board that have been all ruled as valid that the university is engaged in unfair labor practices involving things like changing our compensation without our consent or trying to pressure us to stop striking illegally. These kinds of contexts are things that no public sector employee should ever be engaging in because it's actively violating the standards that we use for trying to do good collective bargaining. And so we ask that you use the pressure that you're able to exert as city council members in order to try and encourage the university to bargain fairly. The only way that we're going to be able to live in an environment where scientists and artists and writers and thinkers can come and live here in Santa Cruz and other states, other cities all across the state, is if we have the kinds of wages that are necessary and the fair bargaining practices that we need to get them in order to be able to live here. I thank you for your consideration on this particular item today.
Thank you. Our next member of the public is virtual, and the name is Aviva. Go ahead and press *6 to unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm Aviva Fields. I'm actually an alum of UC Santa Barbara. I was a graduate student there in the music department working as a teaching assistant for the five years that I was a student there. And I have also been working with our union at the UCSF campus. So I've been working very closely with the postdocs and academic researchers there, as well as the graduate students. And I mean, my understanding last night is that the university and the teaching assist, sorry, excuse me, the postdocs and academic researchers did reach an agreement. But the, you know, it still remains for the university to really meet the graduate student researchers and academic employees where they need to be, particularly on compensation and a lot of these really important issues that allow us to do our work as the students who really do the bulk of the work for this institution and people who are supported on research grants. You know, this, a lot of that, the funding, you know, really comes from the work that, you know, the students here and the researchers are putting in the work themselves to bring in that funding. And so, yes, thank you so much for bringing this item to the agenda. It's great to see all of the public support. It's so important that people see this fight. So, yes, I hope this passes, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your comment. It looks like that concludes our public comment. I don't see anybody else in person. There's no further hands raised virtually. I will bring it back to council for a motion on our consent agenda.
One second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Golda, seconded by Councilmember Cummings. May we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Calentari Johnson?
Aye.
Golda?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Myers?
I'm going to register a no vote, not because I don't support workers in any environment, but I'm just not supportive and don't think this is really where the council should be putting its energy right now. Thank you.
So are you voting no, just on one, or?
Just on number one.
Okay. Vice Mayor Watkins?
Aye.
And Mayor Briner?
Aye. The consent agenda passes unanimously aside from item 1, 6 to 1, with Councilmember Myers a no. Okay, thank you. We will now continue on with our agenda. And this is our next item, agenda item number three, securing our water future resolution and policy guidance for water supply augmentation to improve water supply reliability for Santa Cruz Water Service customers. Members of the city's Water Commission have been invited to attend this meeting for the below item. However, it's not a joint Water Commission-City Council meeting. For members of the public who are streaming this meeting, if this is an item you wish to comment on, now is the time to call in using the instructions on your screen. We'll first have the order as a presentation of the item by staff, followed by questions from council. I'm hearing an echo. The order will be a presentation of the item by staff, followed by questions from the council, and then we will take public comment and return to council for deliberation and action. And I would like to welcome and hand it over to our staff. Rosemary Menard, our water director, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Really, it's a delight to be here. We've been working on this all year, and we did bring you a study session in August about this topic. So hope to bring this forward as a proposal for you to take action on policy direction today. I have a somewhat wordy presentation here, and I apologize for how wordy it is. There's tons of words on these slides. But I want, I'm not going to read them to you, obviously, but I did want them to, while they're being displayed for folks who might be monitoring this, you know, virtually or what have you, to be able to read them so people get the audio, some people get the visuals. So anyway, forgive me in advance. I don't have any charts and graphs. I completely mesmerized you with that the last go-round in August. So no charts and graphs this time. But I did want to let you know that I'm going to do the first three parts, and then Bob Rousher, who's an economist, a water economist that has worked with us on an economic impact analysis of the cost of curtailments, is going to give a presentation, and then I'm going to come back and do a wrap-up. So that's going to be the order. And Bob Rousher is joined with some other folks, and there are other water people, as well as water commissioners, as the mayor mentioned earlier. So with that, I'm going to launch in. So our purpose really is to create sound, community-supported, adaptive management, adaptive policy framework for what we want to need to do to improve our water supply reliability and resiliency. And the direction that we're hoping to get today, and have you codified today, relates to water supply reliability and the phased implementation of supply projects to address our reliability problems and issues. And its goal is to provide durable policy-level direction that allows us to move forward with implementation. We've been doing a lot of planning. There's a lot of information in the materials provided that sort of lays out the histories of all of that planning. And we really want to start moving forward now, continue to do planning, but it's time for us to start moving forward. The key, what I really want to talk about today is sort of the key takeaways from the technical and policy work that we've been completing, the policy development process, the resolution and the policy itself, the elements of that. As I mentioned, the presentation on the economic analysis of the cost of curtailment, and then a summary of what's changing and what we're proposing to replace from existing policy. So the key takeaways are, you know, water supply planning inherently has a lot of uncertainty. I think if you were, if you're sitting where DWR, Department of Water Resources in the state of California is sitting right now, you're feeling very uncertain about what's going to happen next year. You're telling folks around the state, prepare for another very low-water-use availability year. You're hoping, you're crossing your fingers that it's going to snow and that there'll be more water than we've anticipated. But it's inherently uncertain. And even if you're on a groundwater source, it's inherently uncertain because ultimately, the surface water and the precipitation, the weather, is affecting what water's available. Climate modeling has been completed. A lot of really robust climate modeling has been done in this process. It's a pretty impressive piece of work, I think, that we've done using a really robust tool. And it shows us that there are projected increases in the instances of longer dry periods. This is our Achilles' heel for our water system because storage is our problem. The limitation of storage is our problem. And, you know, filling it up when it's wet is great, but if you have a six- or 10-year dry period, there's just no chance to refill it, and that's a big problem for us. Curtailment of demand as a drought response strategy isn't a very effective tool in Santa Cruz anymore. And we've talked a lot about that over the last couple of years, including the work that we did on the Water Shortage Contingency Plan in 2020 and 2021. And I think that that is a hard reality for us to deal with, but I think that that is something that we've taken quite seriously and built into a lot of the analysis work we've been doing. There are technically feasible options to fix our problem. They, we've done a side-by-side analysis of some project concepts. None of these options are low-cost or even low-impact with respect to energy intensity, for example. I think you've heard some things in the, in some of the public comment you've received about the level of an energy intensity. And I don't deny that some of these examples would have greater energy use than we're currently using. But the do-nothing or use curtailments as a drought response tool isn't a low-cost or a low-impact option either. So that's where we are. The process we've used involved, as I mentioned, completing the side-by-side analysis. And you have a tech memo in your packet that showed for the project concepts we looked at, you know, what their costs were, what their, what their description of the infrastructure requirements were, the greenhouse gases, the complexities of how they were, you know, be developed, the pipes, pumps, et cetera, that are required. And we have done that as called for in the Water Supply Advisory Committee's recommendations. And I think that that's been a very good exercise for really sharing the state of these kinds of options. The project concepts we talked about in our process are not the only versions of any of those projects that are available, but they are, they were available to us to do the analysis on, and we wanted to make sure that, to get that information out so that people could see what those options are and not to sort of hide the ball on any of them, basically. We looked at how these concepts, these project concepts would reduce the supply deficits under some of the climate change and no-climate-change scenarios. And we've got a lot of data that we've produced that summarized, some of that was summarized in the tech memo on hydrology and water system modeling that was part of your packet. The policy that we've developed really is, I think, comprehensive. It's data-driven. It looks at the need for us to be transparent and to actively work towards solutions, but to do it in a way that people know what to expect. And so that's the, that's the plan behind what we've done here. And as mentioned, the goal is to get something, you know, in place in a way that's visible. That's why the recommendation is to put it into your, the council's policy manual, that's visible, that allows for ready access. So if anybody has questions about, how are we going to go about this? What are the criteria that's been laid out? We worked very extensively with the Water Commission, and I want to thank them for what great partners they were through this whole year. Hundreds of person-hours of work through the presentations, lots of technical information, great questions, great interaction on, and feedback that helped us shape this policy, I think, to a place where I feel really good about where it is and how it can help us to address the issues. We talked about stress testing of the water system, looking at a whole range of different supply and future climate change scenarios. They were troopers in working with us on the whole, the whole range of things that UC was. So the policy elements are basically five, six, basically. There are the recitals, which are the, tell the story. And people ask me, really, you're going to have like 12 pages of recitals? And it's like, it's a long and convoluted story. And having that background in place really helps to create the context that says, you know, we've been down some of these paths before. We're at a place now where we've done a lot of work, and we need to make some decisions. There's a set of findings that, I think, came from the analysis and the realizations that have occurred in all this work that's occurred over the last several years. I think those findings are legitimate, and they are extremely important to, as, again, the foundation for the policy. We do have a reliability goal this time. I'm going to talk about more of that in more detail in a couple of slides. I think that the goal here is really to make it clear, make it adaptable, and purposefully design it to evolve as we understand more about how climate is going to impact our supply and availability of resources. The resource portfolio is really kind of stating the obvious. We have only what's here. And these are, the options that are here are groundwater, surface water, recycled water in some form, and seawater. That's it. We don't have 20 other options. These are the ones we have to work with. I don't think that any of them are in a place where they can be taken off the table. There's not, this, this policy does not say which one to choose. It basically says there are strengths and weaknesses and opportunities and constraints associated with all of these. And we need to keep our options open because this is too important to artificially limit what we can do. It includes a fairly robust set of criteria, guiding principles, values that came from the Water Supply Advisory Committee work and were amended to include affordability and equitable access to water provision that I think is a key thing to have added. And it includes some implementation guidance so that there's clear expectation on everybody's part about what kinds of things can be coming next. And that's, that's the policy element. I mentioned a little bit about the recitals. I do want to say that writing them and telling the story was an interesting, you know, thing to do to realize how long we've been at this. This is a very longstanding issue in our community. It has a long history of failures, of coming up to the edge of making a decision and then backing away. And this is way before my time. It's way before the desalinization meltdown that occurred in the 2012, 2013 time period. It's a long history of, you know, coming up to the edge and not being able to proceed. And, you know, frankly, around the country, around the world, this isn't the exception, that it's, it's pretty much the rule that this kind of stuff happens. But I think where we are with our, with supply reliability and climate change makes that a chancy thing to continue. And so that's one of the things that, I think, gets told in the recitals. We, I think one of the other factors, and we've talked a lot about this in the, in the process of, again, making the Water Shortage Contingency Plan updates in 2020 and 2021, we really have highly efficient water use. Our customers have embraced this in a way that places us in a really great position in a lot of ways, but also has a downside associated with not very easy and is certainly not inexpensive for anybody to further cut their water use. And I think that that's a place where we kind of are. It makes the potential use of curtailment, which has historically been a very, very important tool for us, a lot, a lot more difficult as a routine strategy. We have a lot of information that, with some, some of which was summarized in the tech memos about what's going on with precipitation temperature in history, recent history in particular, that is very aligned with some of what we're seeing and some of the climate scenarios we're looked at, we're looking at. Weather variability is the key driver for us in terms of the kinds of conditions that would be affecting what kinds of supply augmentation volumes we need to create. It's not so much about growth. I know that that's not, that doesn't sort of line up in a lot of people's thinking, how could that not be? But when you see the fact that, you know, historically, the longest drought we've had was 1987 to 91, and that was a four-year drought. It wasn't a particularly deep drought. Now we're seeing in some of the climate scenarios droughts that go 10 years. And those are the things that are going to drive how much water we need to decide to make, not whether or not we have modest incremental growth over the next 25 years, which has been planned in. I think the reason that we're having a supply reliability goal is that we need to have a guide for the sizing of our supplying implementation or augmentation solution. It's the way to say, if you plan for the worst case, then you have this much as how much you need to build. If you plan for something less than the worst case and using curtailment as your strategy for when you have the worst case beyond that, then you can build something smaller, but you allow yourself, you know, you, you have a risk there that you have to take. And I think in the, in the documents that were provided, we explained why the worst-case scenario was chosen. And we also talked a little bit about the fact that the difference between a sort of a 98th percentile, in other words, 2% chance that you would have something worse than that every single year, the curve is sort of basically going straight up at that point, which means that the difference between a 98th percentile solution and a worst-case solution can be three... and a worst-case solution can be three years of stage-five, um, curtailment. And that's probably not really an acceptable thing in our community. We, uh, we talked about, uh, using this data-driven approach where we've sort of assessed a, um, a particular scenario that we've chosen, a worst case, a, a realization of a particular climate scenario. It's not, it's not the only situation that's similar to that. It just happens to be the worst of those, uh, of the ones we looked at anyway. It's purposefully designed to be, uh, reviewed and adapted as we know more about climate uh, in, over the years, at least every five years, if not more, more routinely. And it does not include the routine use of curtailments, uh, as a drought response tool for the reasons we've talked about. The initial climate scenario, uh, was selected from this range of plausible and moderate options. It includes a two degrees, uh, assumption of two degrees increase in, uh, temperature, mean temperature, a 10%, uh, a no change in precip, mean precip, and a 10% increase in weather variability, which we've already been experiencing. And I mentioned here that, uh, we have about a 2.2 billion gallon shortfall in the last three years of this five-year worst-case sequence. The reason that it's just the last three years is because all the storage gets used up in an augmented system in the first two years, and then you're left with nothing. And then would have, uh, the last three years where we would have the stage-five, um, uh, curtailments because the scale of those curtailments are huge, um, beyond 50% of total supply. As I mentioned, uh, I'm not going to go into this in a lot more detail. The water supply portfolio is what's available here. We do have technically feasible supply augmentation solutions for all of the, the, um, the options, the, the source options we have, the volume that's available for them, the, uh, reliability of those source options. For example, upper storage and recovery depends on having additional rain so that you can put water in the ground in the winter in order to get it back in the summer. And obviously, if it stops raining, that's a big problem. We, uh, the next item is this sort of, uh, list of the guidelines. And as I mentioned, we have a, a quite a robust set of, um, guiding principles, primary evaluation criteria, additional considerations. I think this is, as I mentioned, came from the Water Supply Advisory Committee work. I think it was a, a really great piece of work that that group of folks did, recognizing that it wasn't, it was more about establishing a process for thinking about this and evaluating the options than it was about picking a particular option, which we weren't ready to do at that time. And then, uh, it includes, as I mentioned, the statement about affordability and equitable access. That's in, uh, reflects the city's commitment to health and all policies. And it sets a near-term goal of producing about 500 million gallons of additional supply by 2027 as a means of improving the resiliency and reducing the number of times that between now and, uh, larger solutions, we have to implement some kind of smaller-stage, uh, curtailments just because we don't have a choice and we're not sure what's going to happen next year. And then finally, the guidance. Uh, I think the, a real big goal of this one is to figure out how to translate this policy into action and make it clear what we're all going to be doing next. Um, I want to emphasize a commitment to exploring and pursuing partnerships with other regional water providers, seeking to increase supply and/or address groundwater sustainability issues. So looking, and we have very strong regional relationships already. So the goal here is to do more of that and make sure that, uh, as we're looking at what our solutions are, that, to the, uh, degree that we can cooperate, that we can, uh, we, we take advantage of that because really, in Santa Cruz County, we're all in this together. Okay, uh, here, I want to turn this over. I'm going to stop sharing my screen, and I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Bob Rousher, who is, as I mentioned, is a economist with, uh, 35 years of experience working on, um, on water economics issues. Uh, he's been in consulting firms, uh, for years. I've known him for probably 25 years myself. And I know he's worked a long time with Santa Cruz, uh, including as, uh, one of the consulting, that was consultants who was working with the, um, Water Supply Advisory Committee between 2014 and 2016. So, uh, as we got looking into the, realizing kind of where we were with some of the climate, uh, change issues and recognizing that, you know, the, often the go-to strategy, if you sort of make your solutions less than the full worst-case situation, is you use curtailments. And so we wanted to really understand what was involved if, um, that solution were pursued. And so we asked, um, Dr. Rousher and his team to, uh, basically do this analysis for us. I'm going to let him share this with you.
Uh, thank you, Rosemary, and, and thank you, um, city council members, uh, for this opportunity to, uh, meet with you, uh, this evening. Uh, as Rosemary said, we've done this study on the economic impact of water supply curtailments. Really is a way of looking at, you know, one of the important benefits of having water supply enhancements. We, there's a lot of information about what it costs to bring different potential new sources into the, the city's portfolio. And, and, uh, this analysis provides, uh, some metric of looking at, you know, why, why it may be worth, uh, doing that. I'd also like to acknowledge my, uh, my colleagues, Carolyn Wagner and Colleen Donovan. They don't have speaking roles here, but they, uh, contributed significantly to the analysis and the report. So, um, you know, in looking at what the value of avoiding water shortages would be, uh, we've developed the report, and I think that's in your packet, so there's more information there. I'll, I'll quickly run through, um, in my presentation, what our objectives and approach, um, were, and, um, and focus a bit on the curtailment stages. I, I think it's important to understand, um, how much water would need to be, uh, how much water use would need to be reduced under the various stages and how that's distributed across different customer classes. To really understand how much, uh, basically water conservation would need to be, uh, imposed and effectively reached, uh, to, um, keep the system from running dry under different scenarios. Uh, I'll provide a quick overview of the different types of impacts on households, but most of what we looked at were the, uh, the business-related impacts and, and really kind of focus on the key findings. And there'll be an opportunity for, you know, questions and answers and discussion at the, uh, the end of the whole session. A lot of what the whole water supply, uh, planning effort, um, is about, is about managing risk. And risk is defined as probability, the probability of adverse events times the consequences that arise if those events occur. And, um, Rosemary talked, um, about the work that's been done largely by the, uh, the, um, researchers at the University of Massachusetts on, uh, climate, uh, scenarios and related shortage, uh, outcomes. And, you know, basically, the city and the utility have a limited ability to control, you know, what, what the weather is and how much, uh, water nature provides. In contrast, the, uh, the consequences or the cost of failure are, provide, uh, an opportunity to, um, have some control based on, on how you prepare to manage those risks. And those risks can have some, some high, uh, negative impacts. So we know that the cost of water curtailments can be large. There is a lot of forgone regional economic activity that might occur. Uh, business revenues are reduced, and as we'll discuss, there's a reduction in the economic output through the businesses and located within the service area in the city, uh, with the resulting, uh, impacts on jobs, incomes, tax revenues, and so forth. And while we're focusing mostly on this kind of business impact, uh, related impacts, there are also losses to residential customers. Some of it is, is pocketbook issues from, um, having to pay drought impact fees and excess use penalties, and we'll touch on some of that later. But, um, you know, there are also other, other losses, you know, loss of enjoyment for those who, um, you know, cannot maintain their, their yards and gardens as they would, would have hoped. Uh, lack of access to, uh, irrigated turf areas for, uh, picnicking or recreation, what have you. And, you know, when we, uh, can reduce these kind of impacts by having a more secure water supply, you know, those reduced impacts really reflect one of the important benefits of having, uh, an augmented supply. Um, and it all, all boils down to the old adage attributed to Ben Franklin about when the well is dry, we know the worth of water. Uh, so the methodology involves, um, of kind of a standard economic approach of modeling regional economic impacts, uh, using what we call an input-output model. And the, the model we use is IMPLAN. It's, it's a very widely-used, longstanding model, initially developed by the federal government. And what it does is it tracks, tracks all the ripple effects through the local economy when, uh, spending, um, or, or other events, uh, change in, in one part of the economy and how that works its way through. And there are direct impacts. Uh, for example, if there's a water supply, uh, curtailments and restaurants need to reduce, uh, their water use, they'll, uh, inevitably need to scale back their operations, reducing what we call their economic, uh, output or their revenues and their value added. That creates indirect impacts. Um, you know, the restaurant, uh, owners and proprietors will reduce how much, um, labor they can afford to, to keep on staff, uh, reduce the amount of local foodstuffs they purchase and other supplies that they, um, um, pay for, uh, from local vendors. And it will ultimately reduce the income that's earned by, uh, both the restaurant employees and the owners. And then ultimately, there's an induced impact because the employees and owners have, uh, reduced their purchases because their household incomes are reduced. And the businesses that they would have otherwise supported, uh, then, uh, go through their own cycle of, of impacts. And, um, so this is what the impacts consist of, uh, and we will add them all up and, and talk about the total impact, economic impact. Uh, when we, when we talk about, uh, curtailments, it's really important to understand where your water use currently is, uh, and how that's distributed across your, your many customers. So, um, we're, we're looking at peak season demand because that's, that's really where the, where, the, the problems arise in shortage scenarios. And that's, you know, 1.36 billion gallons, um, uh, per, per the six-month, uh, peak season. And, and that number will, will come into play because every, uh, curtailment stage reduces, is looking to reduce water use overall by 10% or a tenth of that, that amount. So you'll see the 136 million gallons, uh, used, uh, in, in the analysis later on. Uh, but looking at who uses water currently, based on, um, data from, I believe, 2016 to 2018, um, you can see the, the blue, light blue, uh, the biggest, biggest chunks of this pie are residential customers, the, the medium blue here and the orange. Uh, that's about 60% of, of water use is going to households. And then about another 20% is the light blue, uh, slice of this pie, and that's for, for businesses. And the remaining, um, portions are kind of split between the university and municipal uses and irrigation and so forth. So when we go back to looking at curtailments, you know, this, this, these are where the cuts, it gives you a perspective of where the cuts need to come from. Uh, the curtailment policy, um, was updated in 2021, um, and it's contained in some documents that are, uh, you know, available, um, through the, uh, through the water department and, um, but it's significantly, significantly more restrictive than the, the version that was in place in 2016. For example, at stage three, the household limit has been reduced from what had been 10 CCF per month. Uh, CCF is a standard huge, unit of measurement for how much water is used. Um, and it was 10 CCF in 2016. Now it's 4 CCF would be the target in 2021. And, um, uh, the community's had some experience with this new policy. In 2021, there was a, uh, stage-one curtailment implemented, and, uh, the water department found that 30% of the households exceeded their limit of 5 CCF. So it provides a, a sense of how difficult it will be if you get to some of these higher stages to, to accrue the, the amount of water.
We'll give it a minute. Is he out of the country?
Mania.
Okay, he's...
Did he?
I think we lost him.
Yeah, let's wait a second now.
Um, I'm going to have, uh, maybe, we have a couple of questions, so...
Sure.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Council, uh, Vice Mayor Watkins.
Rosemary, I just was wondering if you could explain the difference between, like, what is irrigation and coast irrigation? That was in the slide.
Oh, coast irrigation is, um, agricultural irrigation, uh, by North Coast customers who use, um, typically raw water.
Uh-huh.
So that's, uh...
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Maybe we should, their questions?
Yeah, we can. He's there, but not quite with us.
Stop sharing his screen as well.
Are there any other questions?
One question.
Okay. Go ahead. Councilmember Cummings?
I have one question that, um, someone brought to my attention, which was, you know, we have kind of what has historically been called the norm in terms of how much precipitation we're expected to get, but as we start seeing more and more drought years, at what point does the historic norm kind of change? And we have a new norm that is kind of less precipitation. Is there a certain amount of years where we have to have a certain amount of, like, lack of rainfall to, for that to trigger?
I, I think that, um, after the October 3rd Water Commission meeting, I might have sent through to you a, a, a link to a slide presentation by Sean Chartren, uh, if you had a chance to look at it. It's a, it's a presentation he gave at that meeting that talked about hydrology. And it was mainly about the historic hydrology, uh, trends we've already been seeing. And what he's been, what he shows in that presentation, and I, I have it open, and we can, I can bring up a couple of slides from it later, but, um, what he shows in that presentation is a, that we're already sort of in a new trend, right? From what we've been historically, and that we're not only, uh, seeing warmer, um, warmer minimum temperatures, not so much warmer maximum temperatures, warmer, warmer minimum temperatures, and a definite change in rainfall patterns from, uh, you know, something where we might get two or three inches, you know, November, December, January, to a few storms, uh, which, you know, clearly last year is a great example of that, right? A big storm at the end of October, a storm, a couple, a storm in December. Got our reservoir back to 90% by kind of the end of February. And we didn't get a, almost a drop of rain in January, February, March. So this is a pattern that we've already sort of shifted, which is one of the reasons why this vulnerability we have to, um, you know, longer dry periods is really alarming to me in the role that I have and the responsibilities that I have for ensuring a, you know, adequate supply for our customers.
Um, I'm back, if you want me to continue, I'm sorry, somehow we got disconnected.
Thank you, Dr. Rousher.
Yes, uh, the joys of remote, uh, remote work consumed. So I don't know how much of this came across before, but, um, basically talking about curtailment policy, it's been updated since 2016 and is, is, um, much more stringent than, than... policy, it's been updated since 2016 and is is much more stringent than than had been in the previous version. Households use being limited in stage three, for example, to 4 CCF, whereas before it was 10 CCF. And in 2021, you know, 30% of households exceeded the the target lim limit of 5 CCF when the stage one curtailment was imposed. These we're we're looking at some significant action that would need to be taken. And if you don't augment your supply, then curtailments are really the only tool available to the water department and the community to to keep water flowing. And the whole notion of the curtailments and the way they're designed are to prioritize public health and safety above other considerations. And the water savings that are that would accrue, you know, probably wouldn't be enough to sustain the the supply through a multi-year drought such as, you know, have been experienced or projected in the future. And for households, the excess use penalties can can get quite large. There are some figures on that in our report. But the whole intent is not to penalize people per se, or but it's really to create the right incentives to to make it so that households or or others can't just say, well, I'll just pay and use the amount of water I want, because they do do need to ensure that the water, enough water is available to meet, you know, critical public health and safety needs. So each each curtailment stage looks to reduce overall water use by 10% increments. So stage one is 10% reduction, stage two, 20%. And and I'll quickly go to the other stages where we focus our analysis. But just a quick glance here, you can, you know, the households have kind of a proportionate reduction target that, you know, to the overall level, businesses have have a lesser reduction. For example, businesses at stage two are looking to see their water use reduced 10%, whereas community-wide, we're looking at 20%, so with the intent to kind of keep businesses operating as best as possible. And a lot of the bigger reductions in turn come from outdoor irrigation from golf courses and landscape irrigation. When we get to stages three, four, and five, we're really getting into some very significant reductions in how much water is available for for households and businesses and so forth to use. And you can see, for example, landscape irrigation, you know, that gets reduced to 75% of less water, and then by stage four, all all landscape irrigation is eliminated. One thing to notice for UCSC is that they currently use about 21% of their water allotment for irrigation. So when we get to stages three and higher, now they're cutting into their indoor uses for dormitories, food services, and so forth. And, you know, it's it's quite likely that as we get to these higher stages, they may have to switch to remote learning in order to meet their water use targets. So the message here is that there's there's a lot of water use reduction required in these higher stages and and that will have impact of these different different sectors considerably. So for households, based on what we've seen in 2021 and the fact that the the target levels of use are quite low compared to what we've seen historically, that there may be a lot of excess use penalties imposed on households. And while that reduces the disposable income of residents, you know, that will have an economic impact on the community as households now have less money to to spend on other things. And we and we look at that separate from how we look at the business losses. You know, it turns out when we look at it that it's a relatively small impact, less than 1% increase on what we get from the other sectors. But for some households, that that household budget impact could be significant, and so that's something to to keep in mind. For businesses, we look at how water use restrictions can, you know, ultimately reduce their level of business and their economic output, which essentially is our net revenues. And that reduced output scenario then gets run through the IMPLAN model to look at how that reduces earnings for labor and proprietors, how it affects employment levels, tax revenues, and so on. And one of the key sectors involved would be the tourism businesses, accommodations, hotels, motels, restaurants, and other food services are key focal points. And I'll I'll show a little data from the pandemic from a study done by the state that provides some insights for us. And there are numerous other sectors that we look at through through the non-residential sector. And this slide provides the list of the ones that we focused on. Now, back to the, there was a study done by the state, the State Agency Visit California, using the same sort of modeling approach, and they they provide data on tourism-related spending by county. And if you look at their their report for 2022 and look at the difference between 2020 versus 2019 to reflect the impact of the pandemic, which, you know, ran through like three quarters of that 2019. Total spending in that sector went down nearly 50%, but earnings and jobs and local tax revenues went down, were reduced by about, you know, 23% to 28%. And then looking back at the city, the departments of water use data, we we could see that hotels and restaurants collectively used about 28% of less water. So this this provides us a kind of a a benchmark of how water use is is related to the economic activity levels within this important sector. And so this this is the the nature of the approach we used in modeling of how water curtailments would affect these different businesses and and affect their their output. So, for example, in stage four for the hotel and restaurant sectors, we're looking for, you know, 20-some percent reduction in water use, and we would expect that that would reduce their output by 20 to 30%. And and we used ranges throughout. That's why it's 20% at the low end, 30% at the hot upper end. And we did that for the different stages for the different business sectors. And results, you know, assuming a 20% reduction in hotel and restaurant sector business reduces economic output in the service area by about $100 million a year, about a 1% reduction in overall citywide output, results in about 1,000 job losses and a reduction in city tax revenues of 2.8 million. So in in our report, we have several tables, and there's a lot of numbers here, and I will just touch on a few of them, and we'll use some of them later in the presentation to provide some key points. But, you know, here we show the total economic impact on the business sector results for stages three, four, and five. For example, we're looking at stage four, the amount of economic output lost is, you know, 324 million per year at stage four, or up to over $500 million per year. And that's essentially a 3% to 5% reduction in the overall economic output of the community. And associated with that would be a loss of jobs of 3,200 plus to over 5,000, or 5% to 8% of the jobs in the community, and loss of tax revenues of 8 to 12.7 million, you know, which is a 7% to 11% reduction. And that may be a little high because the the modeling includes some special districts' tax revenues, so capturing a little bit more than what's strictly city tax-based. So so those are our big picture results, and one of the things we did is because there's uncertainty throughout this type of analysis was conduct some sensitivity analyses. We included some other business sectors that we didn't include in the main runs where that were less, that that might be a little less water-intensive. And that increased the economic impacts by about 14%. And we, throughout, because the emphasis is on preserving public health and safety, we didn't include medical service sector impacts, though that is a a large water-using sector and creates a lot of economic value because medical services are costly. The household impacts, as I mentioned earlier, have a relatively small impact on on the economic output and so forth. And then we also looked at including county-level impacts. So what happens in the city itself has effects that trickle out to the to the county as a whole, and that increased economic impacts by about 10%. So if you put them all together, you know, you could get cumulative impacts that were about 25% higher than we've reported here. And this is really where the rubber meets the road, is trying to look at these results and and share some insights on what this means for how much value you would get for enhancing your water supply. So we look at the changes or the incremental impacts of moving from stage to stage. So this focusing here on what if you could avoid a stage four, a year at stage four and keep it at stage three? For that, you would need 136 million gallons more than you you would otherwise have. So what what would it be worth to have that 136 million gallons available in that year? And the change in the economic output is about 210 million to 260 million plus. When you look at it on a a dollar per million gallons provided, you know, that's 1.5 million to to 1.9 million of economic output value added by having this additional water. We also present dollars per acre foot because that's another metric that's commonly used. So we'll put that in perspective here in a minute. So, you know, as I just ran through the benefits of avoiding a stage-four level curtailment and being able to limit it to stage three, and both of them are pretty pretty severe curtailments, but just being able to keep it at stage three rather than stage four saves you that 200 billion plus in economic output. It's also enabling you to avoid job losses of, you know, 2,100 to 2,500-plus jobs. And it also enables you to avoid losing tax revenues in the 6 to 7 million dollar range. And so that's that's where you get the the 1.5 million to 1.9 million dollars of of benefit per million gallons of added water. And, you know, if you also want to look at it in terms of job savings and tax revenues, you know, that's shown here as well, 15 to 20 jobs and 44,000 plus in added tax revenues per million gallons. And to put this in context, the water supply augmentation options that are being evaluated currently by the city, they all cost less than $36,000 per million gallons produced. And that's the highest, the high-end estimate for the most expensive option that's that's being looked at currently. So to put that in in some perspective, those water costs are about 2% or 1/50th of the potential economic impact benefit. So essentially, if you can, in 50-year period, avoid one level four curtailment and reduce it to a level three curtailment, it's it's a break-even proposition. We went through this, making several conservative assumptions. We didn't consider, for example, that businesses could relocate, you know, cities-based businesses that are suffering because there's not enough water for them to conduct their normal business might close permanently and or relocate elsewhere, which have more longer-term negative impacts than one year. A new or expanded business might be motivated to to locate elsewhere rather than in the city. And the household disposable impacts are not included here. So they're relatively small. And finally, you know, our work is is consistent, what we've seen in some other studies, taking the same approach. For example, a piece of work done by Dave Mitchell in 2008 for East Bay Mud in the Bay Area, found that a 15% curtailment versus a 25% curtailment resulted in essentially a 19 billion-plus loss in economic output. And that if they basically added 8 billion gallons to their supply, they would save about 2.4 million of output per million gallons added. So that 2.4 million compares to the 1.5 to 1.9 million that we we derive. So with that, I'm done. I'll turn the screen back over to Rosemary. Thank you.
We're gonna take questions here in just a minute. I'm just gonna do a very few additional slides to kind of close up. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about the economic, what kinds of things were changing and how how what how what policy is being replaced. I think you've seen some things in some of the public comments about old policies, so to speak, and I wanted to take you back to where that policy came from. 2003 Integrated Water Plan work, that was basically said, it used a well-established belief-cost planning approach that treated supply and water conservation demand, long-term demand management, actions on the on, you know, equal plane. Ultimately, recommended a three-part strategy that involved 300 million gallons in additional demand, long-term demand reduction through conservation and efficiency improvements, routine curtailments of up to 15%, which was stage two of the 2009 plan with, but did not involve rationing. Those curtailments are mostly voluntary reductions in lawn watering and those kinds of related issues, and a 2.5 million gallon capacity, million gallons per day capacity. Desalinization plant that was to be developed as a regional project with SoCal Creek Water District, and the the plan there was they were going to use it to augment their, to get off their groundwater pumping and create the additional supply in their aquifer that was ready to see water out, and we were going to use it in the drought period. They would stop using it, then go back on their groundwater, and we would use it in the drought period. But that obviously changed. But by the time we got to the to, you know, the work we've done most recently, what we're seeing is that we basically have a billion gallons in demand reduction. The level of demand in 2002, 2004 was 3.9 billion gallons a year. It's 2.5 billion gallons a year now, so roughly a billion gallons of demand reduction, a long-term demand reduction, stable demand reduction has occurred. Highly, this highly efficient water use makes routine use of curtailments at every stage of the plan expensive and impactful, and no supply project has been built, so because we haven't gotten there yet. So our our situation, we're actually more vulnerable now to droughts than we were earlier because we no longer have this discretionary of water use that we can cut. And in the Water Supply Advisory Committee work that was done 2014 to 2015, there was a clear problem state. a clear problem statement, including the need to plan for the worst-case drought with a deficit of about 1.2 billion gallons over the '76-'77 historical drought, and with some climate change that was added into that. That's a little bit, the droughts we're seeing now are a little bit worse than that, but they're not, you know, orders of magnitude worse, because now we're looking at a five-year drought and we're looking at, you know, a situation in which that's basically not as, not getting a replenishment after just a couple of years as we were earlier. And the goal was to, you know, achieve the additional, some additional demand reduction, long-term demand reduction, but that's basically been achieved in this cumulative 1 billion gallons of demand reduction that's been referred to earlier. The WAC process also laid out this process for evaluating and selecting one or more supply augmentation projects to meet the worst-case drought condition, considered the impact of climate change, and then provided the direction and guiding principles and the, you know, how to, you know, make the decision in a way that reflected the community's values and priorities. And then it created an adaptive management strategy to allow us to incorporate new information as it was developed over the implementation period, which we've been doing. So basically where we are is to kind of come down to the end, where it's trying to establish clear goals, adaptable and analysis-driven supply reliability goal. We want to maintain and build on the WAC work that is related to basic problem definition and guiding principles and criteria. And we want to replace the now no longer practical 2003 IWP policy related to routine use of curtailments. And we want to emphasize moving forward as, to clearly meet the needs that we have as climate change is really, you know, changing and kind of exacerbating our issues with vulnerability from dry conditions. Just to sort of finalize with a couple of slides about what this policy is and what it is not. It is responsive to plausible and moderate assumptions about climate change. It's clear about what our water supply reliability goal is and why use of curtailment as a shortage response tool should be limited. It's transparent about the process we're going to use for incrementally implementing supply augmentation projects necessary to meet our goal. And what it's not, it's not based on the premise that Santa Cruz will grow in an unplanned manner. It's not recommending selection of supply augmentation projects to pursue at this time. And it does not eliminate further consideration of storage recovery as a potential component of our supply portfolio. And it doesn't ignore the relationship between the increased energy use for some of the supply options we're looking at. But the question that it does sort of take on is if we have to make those kinds of decisions in order to meet our reliability goal and maintain our economic viability in our community quality of life, then, you know, that's something that we have to do because downside risk of not doing it is not free or low-cost to you. And with that, I believe, your questions?
Thank you so much for that presentation. And thank you to Dr. Bob Broussier, if he is still joining us. Appreciate the economic analysis and the look into those different stages. That was certainly eye-opening. And I want to bring it out to our council members for any questions before we head out to public comment on this item. Do any council members have any further clarifying questions at this time?
I have some bigger questions, and I think I'll just save those until after the public gets an opportunity.
Okay, great. All right, I will, at this time then, bring it out to our public comment. And if you are here to comment on agenda item number three, securing our water future resolution and policy guide for water supply augmentation, and joining us virtually, you can raise your hand by dialing star nine on your phone or selecting raise hand in the webinar controls on your computer. When it's your turn to speak, you will hear an announcement that you've been unmuted and the timer will be set to two minutes. Members of the public who are joining us here in chambers, please line up to the right of the dais. You will have two minutes to speak, and we ask that you sign in to ensure correct spelling of your name, however it is not required. And water commissioners who wish to comment, if you could just please identify yourself before you speak, you will have three minutes to speak. And you can just identify yourself by name and that you are a water commissioner, and that way our city clerk can adjust the clock accordingly. Okay, I'm going to go out to see if there are any hands raised. It looks like we currently have three hands raised. We've got three people joining us in person, so I'll alternate. And so our first person is Jim Meckus with hand raised. If you could press star six to unmute yourself. Welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Mayor Bruner and council. My name is Jim Meckus. I'm a previous water commissioner, and before that I participated in all the WAC meetings. I strongly ask your support in favor of this water resolution. The one major responsibility our city charter asks of water commissioners is development of Santa Cruz's long-range water plan. That's working with the water department, and this is it. Developed over more than six years, it began with WAC and now complete. It's been vetted by outside experts. It's ready for your approval. The supporting evaluation criteria analysis on page 3.43 of your packet clearly shows that ASR, while necessary to provide storage, cannot close a realistic five-year drought gap all by itself, because it only gets us 60% of the way there. While water solutions are indeed costly, the lack of water solutions will cost even more. On page 3.56, Bob Broussier's Economic Impacts of Water Supply Curtailments, it documents that even the most expensive solution path will be far less costly for Santa Cruz than the economic damage caused by ongoing water rationing. Over the last 50 years, several previous councils have missed key lower-cost opportunities to act that are no longer available. This resolution provides a clearly codified policy and evaluation process, providing necessary guidance going forward so that effective water portfolio decisions can be made. A lot of water knowledge has been developed by both council and the water department over the last six years. It is vital to preserve that institutional knowledge that's been gained, and this resolution does that with a scientifically valid methodology. This is the day to take a first step to a water-secure future for our children and our grandchildren. I ask you to please vote yes to approve. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. I will now invite our member of the public here in person. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor Bruner, members of the council. My name is Walt Wadlow. I reside on Sumner Street here in the city. I am here today asking you to first, support the resolution establishing a policy on securing our water future, and second, to direct staff to add the policy direction in the resolution to the city council's policy manual. I have over 40 years of experience in the public water supply field. I've had the opportunity to serve as chief operating officer for Valley Water, directing the water utility, serving over 2 million people in Santa Clara County, and as general manager for the Alameda County Water District, as director of utilities for the nonprofit Water Now Alliance, and most relevantly, I concluded 10 years of service on the City of Santa Cruz Water Commission. I joined the water commission just as the former water department director was unveiling the initial desalination project. As Rosemary alluded to, it did not receive rousing support from the public. Several aspects of the specific proposed project, and especially the lack of public involvement in its development, led to significant public opposition. In contrast to that effort, the current director and staff have conducted a multi-year, transparent process with continuing extensive public involvement, including the Water Supply Advisory Committee, which has continued to endorse staff's work to bring you not a single project but a policy on securing Santa Cruz's water future. Importantly, the policy supports ongoing adaptive management, critical to selecting and implementing projects incrementally in today's demanding environment and the changing environment that we see driven by climate change, among other factors. I note that a number of the public comments the council received urge a single project approach to the exclusion of others, an approach that is unlikely to meet the city's needs with respect to a sustainable and affordable water supply with equitable access. For decades, Santa Cruz has needed to establish a more consistently reliable water supply that will meet the needs of its residents, its businesses, and the wildlife that also depend on our Santa Cruz mountain water resources. Time to secure our water policy features now, and I urge you to support the staff recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I will now go to our next member of the public joining us virtually, NVC Santa Cruz. Go ahead and press star six to unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Rick Longinotti. Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Great, thank you, mayor. Well, first of all, I really want to appreciate Rosemary and the water department for developing the WAC recommendations over the last several years. I think, and also, I think the water department has done an outstanding job of repairing our existing infrastructure, something that was allowed to deteriorate, and it's been expensive but really needed, and it's something that I deeply appreciate. The only concern I've had for the water department has come just now, which is the notion of setting a goal that, for water reliability, that would say, we want to meet all our demands in the future in a five-year drought. We don't want to ever ask somebody to take a shorter shower or not water their lawn or not water a golf course. That seems to me problematic on two levels. One is that with that kind of goal, it's going to be very expensive, you know? And those costs fall onto the lower-water-tier users as well as the higher-water-tier users. So we're asking people who already don't use very much and who have been conserving to pay for a goal that will never have to ever cut back on water use. The second problem with the, is it doesn't fit with our ethic. Look, one of the great features of Santa Cruz is that we conserve. We, we're an example, we're a model to the state. Now, what does it say that we're, you know, now we're changing, now we're going to have a goal that we'll never have to conserve again? That erodes our ethic. We should consider our ethic as substantial as a dam or other piece of water infrastructure and nurture that and not let it deteriorate. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Our next member of the public here in person, welcome.
Good evening, thank you, and it's really nice to have you back here in person and to have us back as well. My name is Becky Steinbruner. I'm a resident of the Aptos Hills, but I care a lot about water because it affects us all, and that's why I have attended most of the Santa Cruz City Water Commission meetings as well as the county and other water issues. I want to really support what Mr. Longinotti has just said, as well as recognize the hard work in the past of Mr. Scott McGilvray and others of his mindset in the water for Santa Cruz, urging conservation as the WAC did, and also really prioritizing and asking you to prioritize the idea of water, regional water sharing. The issue in our county is that, for this area, is that the storage of water when we have it is a problem. So I want to ask you to consider that as you look at this resolution and as you are asked in the future to approve projects. I also think you should not put all your eggs in one basket. It should be a palette of projects. But I would like to ask you to select those and prioritize those that are less energy-dependent and less technology-dependent. It is notable that the indirect potable reuse, which is very energy-dependent, technology-dependent, and could pose some long-term health risks because there are no studies done for chronic and low-grade exposure of hormones, pharmaceuticals, and things that cannot be removed from the recycled water, that you instead put your thoughts toward collecting rainwater when it comes and having it available. That is what our climate change models are showing us. I ask you to look at partnering with SoCal Creek to develop the Glenwood Reservoir and to build rainy collectors to collect water when we have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Our next member of the public virtually is Justin Burks. Press star six to unmute.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Hello, welcome.
Hello, Mayor Bruner and members of city council. My name is Justin Burks, vice chair of the water commission. I'm honored to be on this commission and be part of our community here. Santa Cruz is looked up to throughout the state as a model of conservation. We have a culture of conservation that's woven in the fabric of our community that will continue as we invest in diversifying our water supply. We've seen both from our own experiences and Dr. Broussier's presentation, that significant expensive rationing during drought is no longer a strategy we can rely on. We need to diversify where we get our water, and this is coming from someone who's privileged to be a leading expert in water conservation professionally with over 10 years of experience in the field. As Director Menard mentioned, this data-driven policy is the product of years of community engagement and technical work. And the project concepts in this policy provide a roadmap for investing in our infrastructure to ensure a reliable, safe water supply that will be more cost-effective than doing nothing or relying on the strategies of the past. The diverse project concepts provide us options. So this policy has the potential to be a model of bringing parties together and developing the water supply this community desperately needs to develop as soon as possible. I encourage you to adopt this resolution and to support staff's ongoing work to secure a reliable water supply as we move into the future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I'd like to welcome the next member of the public here in person. And if you can adjust the microphone to your mouth level.
Mayor Bruner, Vice Mayor Watkins, members of council. I'm Doug Engfer, member of the water commission. Today, I address my remarks both to council and to my fellow citizens. Seven years ago, almost to the day, I sat over here with Rosemary, had the honor to present the WAC findings to our then-seeded city council as we embarked on our supply augmentation journey. Today, I'm proud to comment on our diligent, methodical, consistent pursuit of that work and to support the codification of that work as council policy. Throughout our work, foundational principles have continuously informed our processes, policies, and practices, including social and generational equities, as evidenced in our rate structure and financing strategy, transparency as reflected in our monthly meetings and quarterly WAC updates, accountability as demonstrated in our commitment to database analyses, and of course, stewardship of financial and environmental resources. Our adherence to adaptive management strategies and database analyses have been critical to our progress and success to date. When the data change, we reevaluate our assumptions and conclusions. Notable changes from WAC days include the fact that consumption is down roughly 20% from the levels we were seeing at that time. Climate impacts are likely more consequential than earlier thought, affecting the scale and scope of surface water availability. And California Sustainable Groundwater Management Act defines new ground rules and players that will influence, if not circumscribe, collaborative efforts such as water transfers and ASR. We have a successful track record to date in mid-county. It remains to be seen how well we'll be able to work in Santa Margarita. The resolutions before you update our journey and set our forward direction. They codify the rules of the road and commit to our destination. It will be up to future leaders and citizens to finalize and navigate the detailed roadmap, defining and pursuing a specific project portfolio that solves the problem now and for generations to come. I've long maintained that our independence from outside supplies is an asset, not a liability. We can have control over our water destiny. Our work demonstrates that we have the means to provide Our work demonstrates that we have the means to provide long-term, sustainable water supply reliability. It's now up to us to assert our will to entrust our ultimate success to the data, the process, and future leaders and citizens. I urge council to adopt and the town to embrace these resolutions as city policy relating to water supply augmentation and reliability. Thank you, as always, for your time, support, and service to our town.
Thank you for your comment. Our next member of the public is virtual Sierra. Go ahead and press star six to unmute.
All right, can you hear me?
Hi, welcome.
Hello. Good evening, council members and Mayor Bruner. My name is Sierra Ryan, and it has been my pleasure to chair the Water Commission during the development of the Securing Our Water Future Framework. Firstly, I would like to commend staff on this effort. It has been organized, stepwise process that builds upon the last several decades of work and is true to the values set forth by the Water Supply Advisory Committee and by the community. Secondly, I want to express my support for this item, which provides the guidance the staff and the commission need to advance very necessary projects, and I hope that you vote to approve. My primary job is as the Water Resources Program Manager at the County of Santa Cruz, and I would like to use some of my time to provide some context about the timeliness of this work and the urgency to move it forward. Water resource management in Santa Cruz County is changing at a pace and scale not seen in at least 60 years. The driver for this is climate change. The systems that we rely on for water supply and that support the environment that we cherish rely on a climate that does not exist anymore. Block Loman was designed to fill every year. Our groundwater basins were expected to recharge at certain rates, and our stream flows were sufficient to support important species. The last decade has shown us that those expectations no longer reconcile with reality, and we need supply augmentation. In response to the new paradigm where the historically normal is no longer the norm, every water agency in the county is working at an unprecedented scale to develop, design, and implement projects and management actions to bolster water supply reliability. This is happening not only at the individual water agency level, but more often regionally through partnerships. Some of these partnerships, for example, the Santa Margarita and Santa Cruz Mid-County groundwater agencies, require regional cooperation to meet quantified metrics for sustainability. The City Water Department is the largest water supplier in the county. As such, it's also an important partner in regional supply planning. The policy being proposed tonight provides the Water Department and the Water Commission the guidance we need to move forward with developing water supplies for our customers, but it also supplies our partners in the groundwater agencies and beyond with a clear path forward that can be used for regional supply planning purposes. The data the Water Commission has been presented over the past few months on the likely future rain patterns, the system's vulnerability to those patterns, and the financial and social cost of inaction or even insufficient action has demonstrated that there are no easy options, but there are options that will protect the quality of life of our community. To be clear, we can and will continue to conserve water, but we cannot conserve our way out of this problem, and relying solely on surface water to be there when we need it is dangerous. Adaptive planning based on sound science is the only way forward. Again, I urge you to adopt this policy, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. We have another hand raised, the name is I Am Watching You.
You know, I didn't really want to speak to this. Hey, how come I have two minutes instead of people had three minutes? How does that work? Anyway, you know, I've always wondered if the Water Department would comment on this. Is there any chance of damming Moore Creek? I mean, would that provide additional surface water without any dangerous consequences? You know, and, you know, this idea that the weather and rainfall is predictable, is that really reliable? I mean, we really don't know, right? What happens if you spend whatever it is, I don't know, hundreds of millions of dollars, and then it starts raining? You know, like, will have been a complete waste. I love the planning, I love what the Water Department is doing, you know, with their consideration for what could be, and, you know, advanced planning. I just don't know if major commitments, well, for instance, I don't believe in major commitments to drinking recycled effluent. I'm kind of, I'm a little sketchy on that, you know? But, and as well as sharing water, when our water is so pure and wonderful and the surrounding region's water, you know, it's not so great, you know? So, anyway, that's all I have to say. Bye.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public here in person or virtually that would like to comment on agenda item number three, Securing Our Water Future Resolution and Policy Guideline for Water Supply Augmentation to Improve Water Supply Reliability for Santa Cruz Water Service Customers? Okay, I will bring it back to council, and I will start with Councilmember Myers.
Rosemary, thank you for the really thorough and comprehensive explanation of really what you've done, which I think is pretty groundbreaking for a water utility to say, "We're not going to pick a project because our future is that unpredictable." And it's, I think, something that, I think, will really gain a lot of attention in California and other places in the world, where, you know, utilities are often used to calculating a cost for a pipe, building the pipe, and then paying the pipe off over a number of years with a bond. And I think this is just really groundbreaking, and I think it really will serve our community well because of the type of water supply system that we have, which is slowly being retrofitted, with all the major facilities being updated, but basically, we're dependent on what comes out of the sky primarily. And with that insecurity of knowing what that looks like, what you've basically laid out for our community is, is a policy that says, "We're going to be adaptable, we're going to be strategic," and it also recognizes that our use, our conservation has hardened, as they say in the business. We're not going to be conserving much, if any, more water than what we are right now without some catastrophic economic and other factors coming into play. So, you know, Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion because I think this is really groundbreaking work and support the staff recommendation, but I think it's important for the community to really understand the shift that's going on here, which is, we're not going to be fighting over a water project any longer. What we're going to do is acknowledge that we have to be an adaptable community, and we have to acknowledge that our water use is pretty much about as little as it can be without taking major drastic actions that are probably unsupportable in most people's homes now. So I'm happy to make a motion when ready, but just wanted to just recognize the work and also thank the members of the Water Commission, and especially those folks who have been there for so long, developing all these different parts of what makes up the story of our water security here in Santa Cruz, that's not something you do overnight. And I also want to recognize the work of the WASCAC, which certainly was also groundbreaking at that point in time with the development of the portfolio options that have stayed on the books for a long time. So, congrats and thanks for your work. And Mayor, at the time, I, you know, happy to make the motion.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Watkins.
I'm happy to second that motion. Doesn't exist yet. The, yeah, the motion that's...
I will move the staff recommendation.
I will second the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion officially, Councilmember Myers, seconded by Vice Mayor Watkins.
And I just have a few...
And then we will continue discussion and then go to, we'll vote.
I don't know if I could say it better than my colleague here, but just, you know, such appreciation to the work. Every time I sit and listen to these presentations, I'm blown away, not only by the amount of thought and consideration and investment in where we are and all that we're going towards, but ultimately by how dedicated our community has been to this issue and the need for us to make decisions and to be flexible yet to have that common path and destiny, and I really appreciated that comment. I also just wanted to briefly add how I appreciate the recognition of public health equity and environmental justice being added. I think that we know that is critical, and we can't avoid that, and we can't not acknowledge that or speak to that or plan for that. So I just wanted to also acknowledge and thank you for that, and thank everybody who brought us to this place today. And I'll leave my comments there. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown and then Golda.
I do have a couple of questions that I want to ask in, kind of in the course of my comments, because I, you know, I, well, I share my colleagues' appreciation and, you know, respect and really awe of the work you do. When I start talking about it, sometimes when we're here on particular items, I just feel so grateful, really, that we have such an amazing team, and like, I almost well-up a little bit, so I'm just gonna, I'll say that, I'll leave it there.
I'm grateful we have an amazing team, too.
And I appreciate the approach that's being taken here. I absolutely support it, I appreciate the transparency and the process and the foresight and all of the work that's going into trying to make decisions about a very, very much unknown future. And, you know, the climate crisis is real, the effects that might not have even anticipated even a few years back. I mean, even climate modelers that I used to talk to in grad school, right? Not that long ago, and so we are in this time of real uncertainty, and so having something to, you know, a blueprint for how we're going to move forward that's based upon all of this work is really so critical. So I absolutely support that. Having said that, I do want to raise the concern, which I share in some, in many respects, about the way that this, the state, the goal statement of supply without curtailment for all water users does seem to sideline the conservation concern. Language, right? So, language matters. I mean, I'm here and I'm working through this, and so I don't believe that that is in any way what's happening here, but I do want to acknowledge that it's a concern that people have raised in the community, and it's one that I share, and I am very much committed to looking at a holistic view of consequences and not just, I mean, economic impact to me is one piece of the puzzle. I don't believe it's the only factor on which we should be making decisions about future supply and the work that needs to be done to get there. So I'm a little bit, I have some skepticism about that, and so I guess I just wanted to ask you, given that those concerns have been raised about the conservation ethic and the idea that we should be communicating that to the public, one, how do we, you know, how do we do that in this context? What are your thoughts on why it's not in here more, the language isn't in here more forcefully? And then, the other question, I just flew out of my mind, so I'll leave, I'll come up with it while I, while we're here for you. Thanks.
I guess a couple of comments. One is, from my point of view, the billion gallons of savings from long-term demand management is stable. That's not going anywhere, we're not backing away from that, we're not making the assumption that tomorrow, if, you know, somebody reads this in the paper, "Oh, gosh, the city did a policy," that everyone's going to say, "Okay, well, I can do whatever I want now." I mean, shifts have occurred, right? People have changed their landscaping, they've decided to, you know, do something different with what has been happening there, so it requires less, less water, you know? When I was living in Portland a number of years ago, green lawns were a big thing, and then there was a whole new generation came into the neighborhood I lived in, you know, it was all this sort of turnover, and people wanted to go hiking on the weekends, they didn't want to mow their lawns, and so things changed, and that kind of change has occurred here, right? And we've seen it because after 2014 and 2015, we didn't see the bounce back. And I guess with, I'm going to show you a slide from a presentation that we put together for the, this was for the Water Shortage Contingency Plan. And so this is the difference between, in all the different sectors, you can see, I'll make this bigger, that you can see between 2002, 2004, and 1618, and you can see that in the chunks of water, the difference between the dark blue lines and the light blue lines in certainly the single-family, huge portions of that is irrigation change, outdoor irrigation, which used to be the big target of the 15% routine curtailments, right? In the business sector, where we had some comments in the conversations about, you know, they should just figure out how to get themselves organized so that they could deal with the 15% curtailment, they've already, this has already been changed, too, it's through regulatory changes, it's through retrofits, it's through not washing people's towels every day, it's the things that have been integrated, right? So we're making the assumption all of that is going to continue, we're certainly, but the realities means that if we're going to, if we're going to say we're going to do curtailment as some kind of routine part of our, of our drought management tools, then we're targeting places where there's not a lot more to target. So the idea that people don't want to take shorter showers is like, well, it might not be that, it might be people saying, "I'm going to take a shower every third day instead of every other day," right? I mean, honestly, that's kind of where we are. So I want to, I want to say that the decision about how to treat curtailment in the goal, it's a hard place to say, "Okay, we're not going to do that," because it sort of fits that nice little warm fuzzy spot we all have about how we want to do this, but the reality is, doing a stage one or a stage two, it doesn't produce very damn much water, and it has a negative impact on a community that already has adopted, embraced, and is not changing in any way that we can see from the actual water use data their consumption happens.
So, thank you, and that reminded me of what my last question was, and thank you for sharing that slide, because, you know, I've been paying attention to those big numbers, and the reductions are phenomenal, and I recognize the, I'm a realist, too, and I love that you're a realist, and I recognize the, that there's not, that the hardening of conservation has occurred. And then I wonder, I mean, I just, as a person in our community who talks to a lot of people who are concerned about this, and I notice it myself, well, there's a lot more I could do, and, yeah, wouldn't be my favorite thing to do, taking a shower maybe every three days is not necessarily one on my list of things that I'm thinking about right now, but, you know, like, I just, I don't, you know, how you wash your dishes and all the things, right? And so, and I can't even begin to, you know, envision what that kind of savings would be up against all of the measures that have been taken.
Marginal, unfortunately, very marginal.
Very marginal, right? And it's there, and people think about it, and so I guess I just, you know, I want to be responsive to that, and I also recognize the wanting to be realistic or needing to be realistic, and so I don't mean to suggest that it calls into question anything that I'm seeing here, I just kind of wanted to hear a little bit more about that, because, you know, people see this, and this is work that's been happening, ongoing here, and there have been many, many opportunities for being involved in the conversation, and we haven't heard much, and we've been making decisions. So, you know, being here at this moment, I'm not asking these questions to suggest that I'm not comfortable with the way we move forward, it's just wanting to be responsive to that concern and figure out ways to deliver a message. I mean, I'm just thinking even for myself... I mean, I'm just thinking even for myself, to people about the need to really be thinking about this. I mean, we have limited resources, we just have limited resources and, and as you've said, not a lot of options. So, you know, and I'm not sure that tech, you know, that technology is going to save us. I'm not sure that anyone's saying that, but I, I'm less, you know, I'm less inclined to put my eggs in that basket, I guess. So, I guess I'll, you know, I, I think that's really the, the question that I had. I don't have specific questions about the material in this. You've been great about sharing that and moving us through this. But I do want to just say that, you know, I think that this, we are going to be debating projects. I mean, this is a way to enshrine, codify, you know, a framework for making decisions in the future, but those will be coming to us.
They will.
And, and so to the extent that we think about what the reactions are going to be, and I know you are, you know, just finding a way to really be responsive to that, that set of concerns. So we don't get, you know, into big fights and blocked.
Yeah.
In moving forward because that's, that's still a possibility, no matter what we do here tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Goldar, and then Councilmember Kalen Tari Johnson.
Thank you. I appreciate everybody's perspective. I also want to thank Rosemary and the truly like global collaboration that went into bringing this forward. And I was really surprised to see that it was way back in 2003 that that diesel plant was, that it was almost 20 years ago. And I was one of the people that was really against that. And having, you know, lived here my whole life and taken three-minute showers since the eighties, I was like, I'll save more water, I don't care, I don't want that. And I think at this point, I see that that's not the only option, but that is an option that is something that I think is something we can consider and like having this different portfolio of options is something that I think is responsible in, in, in that, seeing that reduction of a billion gallons and, and the sacrifices that we went through. People might not want to sit next to me, maybe that's why they left, but I only wash my hair once a week. And I hated to have to stop growing my garden in 2009. And this was the first year that I was able to have, you know, my own vegetables again. And then the other impact that really, I think, affected people was when we did have to let the sports fields dry up. It was super inequitable. And I remember Santa Cruz High had just planted a new field and I can't remember how much it cost, but I think it was upwards of a million dollars. And those kids, students didn't get to play football or some of their fall sports that year. And they, maybe some that had cars could travel to South County to play on their fields, but it just, you think about our health and all policies and we want to have those pro-social activities available to, to, to students and youth and adults in our community. And the sports fields is something that I, I don't think that that's a waste of water for people to be able to have that active recreation. So with that, I appreciate all of the thought and the time that went into this and truly appreciate all the time the water commissioners gave to this process. And I don't think it compromises our values of conservation. I really think that I'll, I'll continue, I, I'm not going to shower every third day, but I, I do appreciate, I appreciate all the hard work. Thank you. And I support this fully. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kalen Tari Johnson.
Great, thank you. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Rosemary, and everyone on your team and all the commissioners and every community member who's participated in this process. My, my colleagues have stated it eloquently, so I won't repeat it. But I do just want to share that I thought what was presented to us, both in the council packet and in this presentation, were very complex concepts, but in a, a way that was easy to digest and understand. I'm, I'm not, I don't have a water background and I was able to understand it and follow along and really get what we're trying to accomplish. And what I see, what we're trying to accomplish with what's being proposed is a yes and. Yes, we need to continue with conservation and we have to continue with conservation and that's not enough. And the, the water efforts we have in place are, are great efforts and that's not enough. So that's, that's what I saw in what was being proposed. And I appreciate that there's many options put before us. I know we're not, that's not what we're doing tonight, but it's clear to me what the options will give us and won't give us. And it sets us up for when the time comes for us as a community to make those decisions to have it be really well-informed. So just thank you for your work. Thank you for what you've presented to us and I'm absolutely in support of what's being recommended.
Thank you, Councilmember Kalen Tari Johnson. I think we have a motion on the table. We have a motion by Councilmember Myers to move the staff recommendation, seconded by Vice Mayor Watkins. And, you know, I just want to also echo my colleagues and say thank you to our water commissioners here today in person, taking the time, taking the time over the past several years and joining us virtually for the work and the time and the commitment to our, our city and our future and our water. And because it is uncertain, I think this policy and this policy direction and the resolution is really good work that addresses Santa Cruz's water supply reliability. And as the Chair of the Commission stated, we can continue to conserve water, but we cannot conserve our way out of this. And I appreciate looking, thank you to Dr. Rousher for joining us all the way from Tasmania today. I'm sure it's the next day over there. But looking at ways to maintain our economic viability in this process is huge. So thank you for adding that and thank you for our Health and All Policies commitment. With that, I'd like to ask the Clerk to please do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Kalen Tari Johnson.
Sorry, aye.
Goldar?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Watkins?
Aye.
And Mayor Brunner?
Aye. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. At this time, we have, our next agenda item is Agenda Item Number Four. It's a public hearing for an appeal of Planning Commission approval of CP 200068 located at 126 Eucalyptus Avenue and 136 Pelton. We will be taking a short bio break before we begin this item. We will return at 6:15 to hear this item. Thank you. We will continue now with our agenda today. We are, next up is Agenda Item Number Four, Public Hearing for Appeal of Planning Commission Approval of CP 20-0068 located at 126 Eucalyptus Avenue and 136 Pelton. For members of the public who are streaming this meeting and joining us virtually, if this is an item you wish to comment on, now would be the time to call in using the instructions on your screen. If you are joining us virtually, I will let you know when you can line up to the right of the dais for public comment. This item will be conducted as follows per Council Policy 1.1. First, staff will present their report. Then Appellant Number One, someone on behalf of Opidian, will have 20 minutes to present evidence supporting their appeal. Please note this is regarding the appeal only. Appellant Number Two, Siegel, will have up to 20 minutes to present evidence supporting their appeal. There are two different appeals. Followed by Opponent Responding Applicant, Appellant Number One, will have 15 minutes to present their evidence opposing Appellant Number Two's appeal and supporting the project. I will then call for public comment. Appellant Number One will have five minutes to rebut issues raised in public comment. This time cannot be used to raise new points or issues. Appellant Number Two has five minutes to rebut issues raised by the opponent, applicant and/or during public comment. This time cannot be used to raise new points or new issues. We will then return to council for deliberation and action. To get us started, I will ask Senior Planner Clara Stanger to give us a presentation. Welcome, Clara.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Brunner and City Councilmembers. I'm Clara Stanger, Senior Planner with the Department of Planning and Community Development. This presentation is about the two appeals of the Planning Commission's approval of a proposed assisted living and memory care facility at 126 Eucalyptus Avenue, Project Number CP 20-0068. During this presentation, I will give a brief overview of the project and then discuss the concerns brought forth by each appellant. So the project site is located on the O'Blades of St. Joseph property in the lower west side of Santa Cruz. The property is bordered on the east by West Cliff Drive, Pelton Avenue to the south, and Eucalyptus Avenue to the west. The proposal will reconfigure the site into two new lots, one on the west side and one on the east side of the property. The eastern lot will keep the existing church building and three historic buildings. On the western lot, the proposal is to demolish the two school buildings that were previously used by the Gateway School and to construct a senior assisted living and memory care facility. The city first received a pre-application for this project in November of 2019 and held two community meetings consistent with the Planning Department's community outreach policy. I want to note that the applicant has significantly downsized and revised the project since the initial pre-application submittal in response to both community input and staff review. So the new facility is a two-story building with 76 units, including 59 assisted living units, 15 memory care units, and two inclusionary, aka affordable, units that are required to be design, designated as either assisted living or independent living. The project also includes amenity space such as a cafeteria, multipurpose room, fitness room, salon, lounge, and operational spaces for offices and backup house functions. This is a rendering of the project from Pelton Avenue showing the parking lot and the main entrance to the building. The building has a Mediterranean architectural style and the development will be significantly landscaped throughout the project site. This project was heard by the Historic Preservation Commission on August 17th and they approved the historic alteration permit associated with the project. That permit was not appealed. The project was then heard by the Planning Commission on October 6th and they approved the non-residential demolition authorization permit, sequential lot line adjustment, special use permit, coastal permit, design permit, and heritage tree removal permit associated with the project. The Planning Commission's approval included the addition of several additional conditions. The city then received two appeals of the Planning Commission decision, one from the applicant Roger Bernstein, and one from Ann and Robert Siegel and the citizens from the communities adjacent to Lighthouse Field. So I will start with the Bernstein appeal, which disagrees with an additional condition of approval applied by the Planning Commission that increased the number of required inclusionary units.
I will now, go ahead.
Okay. So the municipal code's standard inclusionary requirement for rental units is under Section 24 dot 16 dot 020 dot 5 dot A and states that 20% of the dwelling units shall be made available for rent to low-income households. Zoning Ordinance 24 dot 22 dot 320 provides the definition of a dwelling unit. As you can see from the highlighted part, a dwelling unit must contain a domestic food preparation facility, also known as a kitchen. Zoning Ordinance Section 24 dot 22 dot 372 defines a domestic food preparation facility, aka kitchen, as an area or room designed to be used for food preparation and that contains two or more of a specific list of appliances or fixtures. So to recap, the inclusionary requirement applies to dwelling units and a dwelling unit by definition must have a kitchen, which also has a specific definition. Only those units that qualify as a dwelling unit with a kitchen count towards the calculation for the inclusionary unit requirement. The project has 76 units, but most of these units do not have kitchens as defined and therefore are not considered dwelling units. Thirteen of the units have kitchens and are considered dwelling units for purposes of this calculation. The inclusionary unit requirement is 20% of these units, 20% of 13 is 2.6, and the municipal code requires a fraction of 0.7 or less to round down. So the requirement is for two inclusionary units. So the inclusionary regulations also have a section for alternative methods to comply with the inclusionary housing requirements. These alternative methods include various options such as land dedication, payment of in-lu fees, et cetera. One alternative method allows the applicant to provide congregate care units in order to satisfy the inclusionary requirements. Section 24 dot 16 dot 030 dot 8 states that the applicant may propose to satisfy the requirement in this way. Then the approval body would need to determine that the proposed development does include congregate care units. And if both of those things happen, then the alternative inclusionary requirement would apply to 15% of the congregate care units. So the Planning Commission decided to make the determination that the project includes congregate care facilities and to apply the different 15% inclusionary ratio to all of the assisted living units, which is the units that the Planning Commission considered to fall within this definition. So the result was a requirement of nine inclusionary units as opposed to two. The applicant's appeal seeks to refute this interpretation and this is the same position that staff has taken on this matter. The code clearly states that the applicant would first need to propose to satisfy the inclusionary requirement using this alternative method. And only then can the approval body make the determination and apply the alternative inclusionary ratio. So in this case, the applicant has not proposed to use an alternative means of compliance and hasn't instead accepted the standard 20% of the dwelling units or two inclusionary units. So therefore, it's not consistent with the municipal code for an approval body to apply this alternative method of compliance to the project. Okay, so I'm going to move on to the Siegel appeal now. The Siegel appeal described a number of concerns, but I think the main themes that appear to be concerned about impacts to the monarch butterflies, disagreement with the location of the driveway on Pelton Avenue, and concerns about the project's consistency with the California Environmental Quality Act or CEQA. So with regard to the butterflies, the appeal letter opens with the dramatic assertion the murder of the monarchs. Santa Cruz's monarch butterfly overwintering habitats are unique and they're special. And I think a lot of people in this town agree with the Siegels that, that this is something that's valuable in Santa Cruz. This value is also reflected in the city's general plan and the local coastal program. So General Plan Policy 2.4.1 and Table 1 of the Natural Resource and Conservation Element call for development projects to complete site-specific assessments for the butterflies and to implement general avoidance or management strategies when sensitive biological resources occur. So avoidance includes designing plans to avoid take of individuals and habitat, buffers to maintain suitable habitat conditions, actions to avoid disturbance from construction, and then management actions to protect from indirect impacts. Similarly, Local Coastal Program Policy EQ 4.5.3.2 requires development in the vicinity of designated monarch sites to undergo site-specific biotic review and for development affecting sites to prepare, prepare a management plan that addresses preservation of the habitat. This policy lists example criteria such as preserving or replacing, excuse me, monarch nectarine plants, prohibiting pesticide use, avoiding monarchs during construction, and keeping smoke away from roosting sites. So the project included an emb- So the project included an investigation by a qualified biologist. The biologist completed several site visits in 2019 and 2021. He did not find monarch butterfly habitat on the project site but made recommendations to protect the nearby overwintering site at Lighthouse Field during construction. So construction recommendations included retaining all roosted trees, including buffer trees, buffering occupied roots by a hundred feet, starting daily construction after temperatures reach above fifty-five degrees Fahrenheit. That's the temperature when butterflies are able to fly around and avoid being displaced by construction-associated vibrations. Trucks and equipment should enter and exit the site along Pelton Avenue from the east via West Cliff Drive to minimize vibrations and exhaust impacts to the Lighthouse Field roosting site. So the city subsequently received several comments from the public prior to the Planning Commission hearing that expressed concerns about the monarch butterfly protection. Based on this public input, the project biologists provided some additional recommendations for management actions to protect the butterflies. So the first one is prohibiting right turns out of the Pelton Avenue driveway. This is to prevent vehicle headlights from sweeping across the monarch grove at night, which would only happen when a vehicle is exiting the site to the right onto Pelton. Prohibiting high beams until drivers are completely on eastbound Pelton Avenue, requiring commercial deliveries to use the driveway on West Cliff Drive and across the church property rather than the Pelton Avenue driveway, locating new landscape trees to avoid excess shading of nectar resources, shielding exterior lighting downward to avoid glare and illumination of the monarch butterfly grove, providing an onsite water source such as a fountain for the monarchs, and then several actions to minimize predators, including installing and maintaining predator-proof waste bins, eliminating populations of yellow jackets, eastern gray squirrels, and bats, and restricting the use of seed feeders that attack predators. Also utilizing leaf vacuums instead of blowers, and then finally prohibiting the use of pesticides that are known to be harmful to monarch butterflies. So all these recommendations provided by the biologist are included as conditions of approval for the project, and they all fulfill the policies for monarch butterfly protection under the general plan and the local coastal program. So the Siegel appeal also argues for the removal of the driveway on Pelton Avenue and advocates for all ingress and egress to take place from the driveway on West Cliff Drive and across the church property. The appeal describes several concerns about the driveway related to butterflies, noise, traffic, impacts to the roadway condition, and public access. I've included a full analysis of this in the agenda report, but right now I'm going to focus on why city staff has found the Pelton Avenue driveway acceptable and also necessary. So first, the subdivision regulations in Unicode section twenty-three dot twenty-four dot oh-thirty dot five describe that a new lot must have direct street access. The West Cliff driveway provides access only across the adjacent lot to the project site. There's also a fire access issue. Using the driveway from West Cliff Drive and across the church lot creates a fire access path that exceeds a hundred and fifty feet, and therefore we'd need to have a fire truck turnaround designed on the site to meet the fire code. This would require redesigning the site plan. The Siegel appeal also suggested retaining the Pelton Avenue driveway as a gated emergency access only, but the fire department has expressed concerns that a gate would impede their ability to respond efficiently, given the number of trips expected to the site. Finally, refuse service vehicles will need to use both the Pelton Avenue and the West Cliff Drive entrances to service the site efficiently and avoid a complicated turnaround situation. So Public Works staff does not support eliminating the Pelton Avenue driveway either. With regard to the butterflies, I just want to mention again, the biotic review did not express any concern with regard to the driveway location and did not recommend relocating the driveway. I also want to touch briefly on coastal, public coastal access because it's important for the coastal permit, and the appellate indicated it was a concern with regard to the driveway. So this driveway actually already exists. It's a curb cut on Pelton Avenue, so improving the driveway will not change the available on-street parking on Pelton and it won't affect coastal access in that way. The project is also required to improve the sidewalk along Pelton Avenue on the property frontage, and that will help to improve pedestrian access in that area. Finally, I want to note that senior citizens with special needs or disabilities is likely an underrepresented group of people when it comes to public coastal access, and creating a facility for them right here will help to create a public access opportunity that otherwise likely would not exist for these individuals. Okay, so finally, I want to talk a little bit about SEQA. The Siegel appeal questions the Planning Commission's acknowledgement of the SEQA exemption and appears to assert that additional review of the project is needed to be consistent with SEQA, especially with regard to the nearby monarch butterfly habitat. So when we review a project for consistency with SEQA, we first need to determine whether the project qualifies for an exemption from SEQA. If it does, then we're done with SEQA review and additional studies such as an environmental impact report are not required. In this case, the project qualifies for three different exemptions, so no further review is required under SEQA, and I'm just going to describe those briefly now. The first exemption is under SEQA Guidelines section one-five-three oh-five for minor alterations to land use limitations. This covers the lot line adjustment portion specifically of the project. The second exemption is under SEQA Guidelines section one-five-three-three-two for infill development. This exemption is allowed when a project meets specific criteria with regard to general plan and zoning consistency, project size, location in an urban area, habitat value, traffic, noise, and air-water quality. I want to note that the specific criteria for habitat value under this exemption is that the project site has no value for endangered, rare, or threatened species, which the appeal letter emphasized, and I believe was trying to express that it didn't qualify for the exemption because of that. So, but I want to just explain that while the project site is near the monarch butterfly habitat area at Lighthouse Field, the monarch butterfly is not listed as threatened or endangered under state or federal law. In addition, the project biologist found that the project site itself does not have monarch butterfly habitat. So while we care about the monarch butterflies and we have local policies in place to protect them, they actually are not relevant, I guess, to the infill development exemption under SEQA. Finally, Public Resources Code section two-one-oh-eight-three-point-three and the corresponding SEQA Guidelines section one-five-one-eight-three provides that no further SEQA review is required when uniformly applied development policies or standards would substantially mitigate the effects of a project. So our SEQA review has confirmed that with the application of general plan policies, the zoning ordinance, and other standard city requirements that are in place today, the project is fully exempt from further review under SEQA. I also want to mention that our SEQA attorney, Jim Moose, and our SEQA consultant Stephanie Strilo are both here tonight, and they're available to answer any questions you may have about SEQA. Okay, so in summary, staff recommends denying the appeal of Ann and Robert Siegel and upholding the appeal of Roger Bernstein, thereby adopting the resolution approving the project with the proposed conditions and with the deletion of the inclusionary housing condition that was added in by the Planning Commission. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. I think I'm going to, at this... Are there any questions at this point? I'm going to otherwise roll right into the first appellant. So I will now call on Roger Bernstein, who is here on behalf of Opidian, to present evidence supporting their appeal. Welcome. You will have twenty minutes. Please note this is regarding the appeal only.
Hi Sonia, my name is Roger Bernstein. So good evening and thank you very much for having us here tonight. I have a question before I begin. I was going to begin with a brief overview of our neighborhood and public reach-out, and then I was going to turn it over to another member of our party to discuss the appeal. If that is okay, I'd like to proceed, otherwise I could just hand it straight over to a party and the other member to discuss the appeal.
It should be just regarding the appeal.
Okay, okay. Well, I just want to say a couple of things and then I'll turn it over to Frank. I won't get into too much detail at all. Again, my name is Roger Bernstein and I'm with a company called Opidin. We are the applicant, and I actually live on the west side of Santa Cruz, on Pelton Avenue just down the road from the site, which as you all know is the O'Blades Church property. I would like to start by thanking all the folks who have helped us get this project to where it is today. This includes city staff, elected and appointed officials, and our group of expert consultants and project team members. I would like to ask if we could put up the... I sent some slides through, at least the opening slide is all I need.
Okay. The city clerk is getting that up.
While she's putting it up, I'll go ahead and keep going. I would also like to extend a special thanks to all the neighbors, all the Santa Cruz neighbors, all my neighbors, who've had extensive input on this very important project. I firmly believe that we have a better and more inclusive and more aesthetically pleasing project because of it. This project is very personal to me. That slide is fine, that's perfect. This project is very personal to me, not only because I live right down the road from the site, but because my wife and I have two parents who need assisted living services, and it would mean the world to us if we could have both our parents housed in the senior community, close to our family and close to where we live. Senior housing and specifically assisted living and memory care, senior housing is in dire need in Santa Cruz, and we feel very fortunate to have the ability to bring this very important housing project to this community. Interestingly enough, even though we're still a few years out from opening our doors, we have a significant prospect list compiled of Santa Cruz residents who are on a waiting list for themselves or their family members. With that, I will turn it over to Frank, who's going to go ahead and discuss the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome Frank.
Hi. Good evening Mayor Brunner, members of the City Council. My name is Frank Petrilli. I'm a Land use attorney with Coblenz, Patch, Duffy &amp; Bass, here on behalf of Opidin. I think we're going to keep our remarks really brief. We thought that city staff, the city attorney's office has done a great job, and the basis for our appeal is really straightforward. I mean, we think the Planning Commission really, or majority of the Planning Commission, was looking to get to a particular outcome, wanted to increase the affordability standard, looked at portions of the code, kind of selectively quoted some stuff, took it out of context, and the result, and unfortunately, all of that really occurred after the close of public comment and the public hearing too. And the result was a condition that increased the inclusionary requirement, really did not take into account the pretty significant impacts from an order-of-magnitude standpoint on, you know, the feasibility of the project. We think that the... This is really not a case where the language in the code was ambiguous, or we think reasonable lines could differ about, you know, what the interpretation is. Again, our basis for our position was laid out in the appeal in a letter we submitted last week. And two staff reports at this point, and I think Clara did a really good job of kind of covering, you know, why we think really the Planning Commission abused its discretion in imposing this condition and was effectively kind of making, you know, new policy, legislating really from the dais in a way that was not appropriate. So we don't have much really to add to staff's analysis. We're here to request your support to remove that condition. We're here to answer questions, and we'll just close by expressing our gratitude and appreciation for the hard work of staff. It's been, you know, a three-year process. It's... Review has been exhaustive and extensive, and we're really excited about the project at the end of the day. We're proud of what we've done, and we hope that the city feels the same way. So we're here to answer questions, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. I will now turn it back. Let's see. To... Let me pull up my notes. So I'd like to bring it back and welcome our second appellant, Ann Siegel, who will have up to twenty minutes to present evidence supporting her appeal.
Let me start the clock. I do have exhibits here that we're going to put up. I didn't have access to internet and I didn't have access to do a PowerPoint. So I did the hokey thing that we used to use, which is not technology.
Thank you.
And so he's going to just put up some pictures that are not going to be marked into exhibits. Hope you can just put those out. I appreciate it.
We'll give you a minute to get those set up.
And then also I have a handout for everybody that we're going to do. Yeah, I think there's a handout of... Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, we'll start the clock.
Okay, and where is the clock?
It's on the screen. Do you see it up there?
Oh, there, thank you. Okay, the clock is starting. This is my first rodeo. I am Ann Siegel. I am a college professor. My husband, Dr. Robert Siegel, is a dermatologist here in Santa Cruz on SoCal. We are homeowners in Pelton Avenue. Before I begin my prepared remarks, I think the community should know, press if they're here, probably people who are here, that you have in your packet the agenda, and there are two documents in there. One is titled, "Be it resolved, the appeal of Ann and Robert Siegel is denied." All it needs is your signature. The other document says, "Be it resolved, the appeal of Watermark Oppenheimer, AKA Roger Bernstein, is hereby granted." And so there won't be any allocation for, or any additional allocation for low-income housing. I was a judge for ten years. I reviewed piles of memorandum, and if anyone in my staff ever had the audacity, or prosecutor or defense attorney, to give me the document that dictated my decision, I would have tossed it in the trash. You know, here's your guilty verdict, just sign the bottom. No! So I hope I'm not just up here reciting nursery rhymes to you, that you've already been told what your decision should be. I hope that you will listen to my arguments and consider what I have to say. And that being said, also, under ethical rules, I'm not able to be representing Dr. Robert Siegel. He's going to call in, but due to the scheduling of this, as I have indicated, he could not be here. Excuse me. Oppenheim and Watermark are very well-financed, private, for-profit, equity investment companies that will put a lot of money into Santa Cruz for their investors. It's unknown from the document I've received what benefit they'll be to Santa Cruz, but they'll spend money. I'm from Tucson, Arizona, and Oppenheim has their headquarters there. They run over seventy-two retirement facilities throughout the community. Oppenheim, I think I'm mispronouncing it, Oppenden, is the construction entity. They bring in their own crews and they build the sites. Watermark handles the sales and services. We estimate they earn about two-hundred million a year, and their value, I'm guessing, just projecting from what they've sold, is about probably close to a billion dollars. They have a business model that creates housing for people living their last years, and it's for the wealthy. I understand that they find properties, they plop down new construction, the construction is self-contained, that they put into a piece of land. Pillars on the east coast, red tiles on the west coast, they follow a formula but not necessarily function. The neighborhood I live in on Pelton Avenue, I'm new to the community, I'm happy to say, will bear the brunt of the construction and maintenance of the seventy-four thousand square-foot building. The site is adjacent to Pelton Avenue, a tranquil estate park of Lighthouse Field, the home of the monarch butterflies, hoot owls, and many, many, many people. So I'm asking, as a condition of this appeal, that you stay it, that there is needs to be more study. Not to defeat it, not to say this isn't a good project, but just to stay it to get more information. The first issue for the stay is a need for an objective review of the environmental impact on the adjacent surrounding areas. The standards require an environmental review that is ensure... And to ensure, not estimate, the protection of natural resources, wildlife habitats, scenic views. It's appealable error at this point because the project was not evaluated for the effects and of the development on the adjacent coastal areas. The impact of the visual resources through an objective analysis on the surrounding areas as well as on the coastal access. This is a requirement under SEQA. The staff report considered the impact on the land itself, said it's an infill, has no real value, but the studies that they did contain very little information about the adjacent, open, wildlife-rich areas of Lighthouse Field or the impact of this project on the neighborhood, which is exactly what SEQA mandates. While removing buildings and planting trees is consistent with the general plan, there's been nothing that explains what is the impact on the adjacent parts of the community. There hasn't been a SEQA evaluation for years. They seem to approach the responsibility, the staff seems to approach the responsibilities, like there's a shopping center across the street or maybe a cement factory. I watched coastal commission hearings where they interviewed people who were looking at a bridge to see what the impact would be of their view of the bridge. That impact was not done here. We have a very special marine and land habitat in Pelton Field, in Lighthouse Field and Pelton Avenue. The field provides coastal access to low and modern income communities, to the park and to the beaches. The adjacent areas along Pelton Avenue and its threads of streets from Lighthouse Field provide generous sources to tourism due to easy and open parking, countless sporting events. Pelton Avenue itself is a pedestrian walkway with a peaceful combination of walkers, cyclists, families, dog users, surfers that rely on this adjacent area to this development for its community value. Please look at the photographs. You see what we get to see. You see what will be disturbed without further investigation. But drilling down is on the importance of the SEQA evaluation is the inadequate report that I do refer to as the murder of the monarchs. This monarch habitat is a beautiful, heavy tourist destination that brings lots of people here. But the primary entrance, if you look on your exam... And if you look on your exhibits, excuse me, will show you that entrance for their grand and beautiful entrance that they have, that they're going to bring in. All these beautiful views pops right into the monarch... It steps away from the monarch habitat. Now, they did bring in a consultant, but the consultant that they had was not a butterfly expert. He was a biologist, but not a butterfly expert. But the SEQA demands would say, yes, we need to see what the impact will be on the adjacent areas around this field, all the way around down Lighthouse Field, all the way down Pelton Avenue. So the first aspect of this appeal is that I ask you to table this, require a SEQA evaluation on the adjacent areas, direct staff, that there be mandate compliance with coastal commission, consider the impact on the public access adjacent to this coastal region. If you look at their overhead map, again, contained in this exhibits that I gave you, it also should be a mandate that all, during the destruction of all the buildings, of all the concentration, be away from Pelton Avenue and onto Cliff Avenue, West Cliff Avenue. As a matter of appeal, I ask this council to direct the landlords, the church, the landlords or the church, and the staff made the mention, like, there's two separate pieces of land. No, excuse me, the church owns both pieces of land. They're the landlords. They're getting a lucrative, valuable lease income payments from this. They're leasing it out and saying, oh, no, but you have to stop here. And I'm saying to you as city council, it's like, no. You want to get the financial benefit of this, you pay the responsibility to it for the community that surrounds that area. You want to lease your land, good. But you don't just lease part of it and then say, but now we pretend like we don't own it. No, you own it and through this lease, you give access through your property onto Cliff that's already there. The lucrative lease should require them to bear part of the brunt of the vehicular traffic. And I ask that you direct, that there not be vehicular traffic for construction or other vehicles on Pelton throughout this process. Let's protect Lighthouse Field, Pelton Avenue, and the onset of the development. The coastal commission requires study of the impact of this development on adjacent resources, as I have said. Pelton Avenue is part of the master plan, as contained in your exhibits. Pelton Avenue is part of the master plan now that is really in play right now because of the collapsing of Cliff. We're seeing things falling apart with Cliff and if you look at the master plan, which I don't know, we need to look at it, Pelton Avenue is an essential part of that. So again, I urge you, table this. Stop this, you know, this, all, hurry up. This thing's been going on for a couple of years. Nothing happened until August, then bing, we got to get this done, we got to get this done. Why? We need to know, okay, now that we have some problems on Cliff, how is this going to play into Pelton? How is it going to affect their ingress and egress? How is it going to work? We're not going to get the applicant or Santa Cruz Planning and Zoning to budge from this fiction that there'll never be more than 21 people on this campus at one time. Common sense will tell you it takes more than that to provide meals, medical care, activities, housekeeping, security, groundskeeping, maintenance, administration, sales for the 80 people who will need services 24 hours a day. Not just during the week during a school day, is what they keep saying. Oh, we're not going to get more than what was at Gateway. High-end elder care, which is what they provide, and by the way, they've never said how much they charge by the month, is judged by the quality of their staff. And so fiction to think that the planned parking of 40 spaces, including visitors and residents, is adequate. It's a fiction. They said they'll only have three deliveries a week, including deliveries from a refrigerator truck and that the loading off Pelton will, quote, "have minimal expected commercial trips to assure compatibility." What is the remedy to our community? When there's daily trucks, daily ambulances, daily fire trucks, daily deliveries, 10 times what they predict? And I ask you, why should we trust their predictions? The applicant reported that their traffic study for this project, done three years ago, indicated there's just light traffic on Pelton Avenue. And there'll just a few more employees, it's not going to be significant. The report is flawed. We asked an engineer to review the report. The study performed by Keith Higgins was on Thursday, November 14th, 2019, was for seven hours on a cloudy, overcast day with a nearby thunderstorm. Recorders are normally placed for seven days. Watermark conducted their traffic density for part of one day. Mr. Higgins used an outdated manual to predict future traffic studies rather than the 11th edition of the ITE ship general. The cost will be to us as neighbors and to you, the city of Santa Cruz, if we have to repave Pelton Avenue because of the heavy traffic that was reasonably anticipated. I ask you to do a feasibility study to determine if a trust fund can be created from this applicant to cover future damages to Pelton Avenue. Look at Pelton Avenue, you can see it doesn't exist. It has the structure of a dying elephant. Direct a survey of merit to look at pedestrians by traffic on Pelton Avenue. As part of the SEQA report, we asked that there be anticipate... A study to anticipate the increased traffic on Pelton Avenue due to more trucks and ambulances, heavy equipment. Require a cost estimate for using Pelton Avenue. They also, the reality is, I interviewed fire officials throughout the city of Santa Cruz. They said this is completely inadequate. Right now, fire trucks have to back, would have to back out onto Pelton Avenue to get out and they're coming in and out and in and out. There isn't a valid, responsible way to address the problems of fire trucks and access. It hasn't been resolved. Table this, demand more study. But the last and the most important issue. A 2020 reference reveals that the entire Watermark project between Eucalyptus and Pelton Avenue lies within a tsunami inundation zone. According to the 2012 City of Santa Cruz Local Hazard Mitigation Plan and further confirmation by the DEIR Figure 4.72 using the same map, there's a serious error in the environmental review of page... That's described on page 52 in the packet with you under Exhibit 4. That review, flood hazard areas, indicates only the eastern portion of this project is located in a flood hazard zone and states no portion of the flood hazard zone has residential structures. However, the map clearly shows the entire zone would be inundated by tsunami. This is further confirmed by the map of an unmarked map of page 30 of Watermark's revised pre-application. We know that due to global warming increases tsunami danger, our coastal region is prone to earthquakes. As the coastal commission points out, land use must be done with exquisite care. Please reject the advice of our city planners. There's just too many flaws. Watermark and Oppendon want you to approve their for-profit plan to place 80 vulnerable individuals in a tsunami flood zone. 30 of them will be in a closed and locked building should a new tsunami building inundate the buildings. Watermark, this is your notice. This site is not safe for assisted living home and it's your liability if you insist that this project continue. I think it would be wonderful if you build a retirement home in Santa Cruz as you do it with a lot of class and a lot of cash, but just not in the location you chose. City of Santa Cruz, Obelitz, St. Joseph, the property isn't safe for development. Realistically, the property shouldn't be used for anything other than open space. There should never be a vulnerable population, school, or large gathering housed there. If the applicants really think it's a good idea to place 70 elders, some of them who would be trapped in locked building in a flood hazard zone, do we really want them as neighbors? I could not find any memory care facility or assisted living home this close to coastal region anywhere. Council, please table this project. If you sign that resolution denying my request to stay this appeal until further studies are done, I'm going to be dramatic. Are you signing a death warrant? We're talking about a tsunami zone. We're talking about retirement homes. We're talking about elderly people who could not get out. So there could be a tsunami, yeah. And the last thing then, pouring across Lighthouse Field, if you look at this one picture, right here. Or right here.
Can you hold those up? I'm not able to see them.
The last thing, these people will see, as they come and look at this beautiful view and then they'll drown. Thank you.
Does that conclude your... Okay, I'm now turning it back to Oppidian, who will have 15 minutes to present their evidence opposing appellate number two's appeal and supporting the project. This time may not be used to further address your appeal.
Hi, thank you, Mayor Brunner, members of the committee. So one of our goals when we started this project was to enlist a local team of consultants, contractors, and we've actually done that. We have, right now, we have a local Santa Cruz civil engineer, traffic engineer, aubrist, soils engineer, and two biologists. One biologist on our team, Justin Devilla, and one biologist who we've been consulting with, Bill Henry, both of them extremely knowledgeable in the area of butterflies. We've also enlisted the assistance of several local contractors to advise us on material selection and estimating. There was a comment that it was a little unclear to me that we are based in Tucson and have a traveling construction crew. Our head office is in Minneapolis. My office is in San Jose and I live just down the road. Currently, we have done a couple of projects with Watermark. We are the development entity. Watermark is an operations entity. They are operating currently one of our communities that we did with them in Napa, California. We're building another one with them down in Oceanside in California. Both of those projects use local contractors. The one in Napa used a project that was based in Sacramento, used a contractor based in Sacramento. The one in Oceanside is using a contractor that's based in Solana Beach, which is about 10 miles to the south of that project. Both local contractors. And as I mentioned, we are talking with local contractors here. Our goal here would be to hire a contractor from the local region to build this project. A couple of other things that was mentioned, they were talking about the photos. I think the photos, as you can see, it's a beautiful area and quite honestly, we're hoping to bring seniors to this area to be able to enjoy the natural surroundings and beautiful views and the butterflies. We take that very seriously and we can't wait to have our seniors enjoy those beautiful resources. As I mentioned, our biologist, Ecosystems West, and Justin Devilla specifically is a very renowned butterfly expert, as is Bill Henry, and both of them have weighed in extensively on this project. And I think, as Clara Stanger mentioned, many of their suggestions have become conditions of approval and we've agreed to all of them. You know, we, as I said, we take this very seriously. Let's see, there was a couple of things. So there was a discussion on our traffic study is flawed. We have our traffic consultant here and he can address that potentially later. They, we had the traffic study done. You know, these projects take a long time. It was then updated several years later. And he also did a self, using a cellphone data study, which was able to capture very accurate traffic information. But the bottom line is, our project is going to produce extremely limited traffic. I know there was a discussion on the number of staff members. This is an RCFE community. This is licensed by the Department of Social Services. It's not licensed by the Health Department. This is not a nursing home. They have much stricter standards for employee numbers. We're an RCFE community, a retirement community for the elderly or residential community for the elderly and our, the staffing requirements are significantly less and we're looking at staffing levels of somewhere between 12 and 18 staff members at any one time. So as you know, most of our residents don't drive. We have assisted living and memory care residents. So if one or two own a car, it'll probably just sit there in the parking lot. But we are really going to be, we are going to be contributing extremely small quantities of traffic. This is a very low-impact use. One thing that's interesting is Pelton Avenue. I can talk about this as a neighbor. I've been walking my dog and riding my bike over to Steamer Lane for years and, yeah, Pelton Avenue appears to be beat up. It's a solid road, but it's, you have to drive it very slowly. And I've talked to many neighbors, not just in relation to this project, but just over the course of the years that I've lived here. And neighbors love the concept of the whole... They love the rough nature of Pelton Avenue because it forces you to drive slowly. I'm sure many of you have driven Pelton and you absolutely cannot speed. There's speed bumps. There's one right in front of my house at Clark and Pelton and people. They use it as a launching pad. But the problem is, because that area of the road is paved, it's smooth and it allows people to accelerate. The area in front of our project, the area between Eucalyptus and West Cliff, is extremely rough and it forces people to drive slowly. And people have told us, they don't want us to go ahead and pave that area. Of course, we would pave it. We would make it smooth if they wanted it. They don't want it. And I think Ann would know that if she'd lived here for a while. But as I said, I've lived here for many years and they really don't want it. So I think that was that there was a lot of discussion about, you know, tsunami and danger and all that. I don't feel like I need to address that. I think, Frank, did you have any, anything else? I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I will call for public comment. I will look to our virtual attendees and also if you are here joining us in person, please line up to the right of the dais. My left. Looks like we have three hands raised virtually. I will begin with our first person in person. Welcome, please step forward and make sure the microphone is at your mouth.
I don't think it reaches. Thank you, Mayor and council members. My name is Craig James. I live on Pelton. I moved to Santa Cruz in 1953 and I've been away for a while, but just moved back for retirement. I support all of the comments by Ms. Siegel. I also like to say that I support senior housing. My mother is in La Posada over on... My mother is in a place is in La Posada over on Frederick Street, and I know Santa Cruz needs more senior housing, probably need even more in the future. However, not at the expense of the neighborhood. At La Posada, I think, is a really illustrative example. I can only imagine back when it was approved that the developers said the very same types of things that my neighbor here said, that there won't be any problems. In fact, it's terrible over there. The fire trucks and ambulances come every day. Almost anytime I go to visit, the parking is blocked by delivery trucks, whether it be laundry or La Posada's own bus that takes the residents out on on trips around town, that sort of thing. It's a mess over there. The traffic, a lot of the residents, there's a lot of parking for residents, but it spills out onto the streets. There's a dozen cars that park on the street all the time. When we go to visit, there I think there are eight visitor parking spaces. I would say seventy-five percent of the time, we can't park there and have to park on the street. I can't imagine that this new development will be very much different. My father and my grandmother lived at Oak Tree Villa up in Scotts Valley. That was also an assisted living facility, and a number of the residents there. The idea that only one or two people will have cars for residents is just ludicrous. That's just not how it works. A lot of people in assisted living are very active. They just need a little help with this and that. So that's a bogus argument. The right turn only, the traffic on Pelton, I think the city analysis is wrong. Over at La Posada, there on Galt Street, there's a no, there's a right turn only sign. It is completely ignored by the people who use that because it's more convenient to go out on Galt Street.
Your time is up.
Thank you. Unless the city plans to station a police officer there, traffic is going to increase.
Thank you for your comment. I will now bring it to one of our virtual attendees, phone number ending in nine seven zero zero. You may press star six to unmute yourself. Go ahead and press star six. There you go. Welcome.
Great, thanks so much. This is Robert Segal. I'm Dr. Robert Segal, one of the neighbors on Pelton. I'm speaking against this project. It's incomprehensible to me why the planning staff is pushing this project as much as it does, as it does not appear to be in the best interest of the community of Santa Cruz. In a facility such as this proposed facility, the public is not allowed to use the parking lots, the lobby, the cafeteria, the grounds, or the garden. Can't utilize the security, the nurses, or anything. For the neighbors, the effect of having a facility like this next door is the same as having a busy factory right next door to you. This facility should be built in an industrial or commercial zone, which has adequate streets, appropriate zoning, and room for the fire trucks, and close to established medical facilities. Let me elaborate on that. I anticipate that this project will rent rooms to eighty wealthy elderly people, many of whom are not from Santa Cruz. These elderly will have trouble finding doctors. The town has a severe physician shortage. As a dermatologist, I myself am booked out for six months. No primary care or internal medicine physicians are taking new Medicare patients that I know of. If you know of one, please let me know, because I'm looking for one. Who will be the neurologist and psychiatrist for the thirty patients with Alzheimer's or cognitive deficit in memory care? Further aggravating the healthcare situation is that much of the medical care in town is delivered near SoCal, a twenty-minute drive from this Watermark site, if you don't hit any traffic. Remember, there isn't enough parking to allow residents to have a car, so they'll be dependent on a fleet of transport vans that Watermark will need to keep them seeing doctors. This site should be closer to SoCal and be closer to the major roads. It's been three years since the flawed traffic study was done on an overcast day in November twenty nineteen, which estimated over two hundred and fifty trips a day, and that's low. Now, with Cliff Drive collapsing, sea levels rising, the city planners are pushing this project as though there's some benefit to the city residents, which there's not. Please table this resolution and obtain a new unbiased analysis of the project.
Your time is up. Thank you. I will now invite our next member of the public in person. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Bruner and council members. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I am Father Matthew Spencer. I represent the Obleitz of St. Joseph, the landlord of this project. The Obleitz have been on West Cliff Drive since the nineteen thirties. We take very seriously our responsibility to be stewards of that property. We serve the people who live in that neighborhood. We've done that since we arrived, when it was originally largely Italian immigrant population. We continue to do that to the best of our ability now. I also take my marching orders from Pope Francis. I'm very proud of his stance on protecting the environment and being a good steward of the environment. I think my decisions at the shrine in recent years, including a large solar project, including a large protection of our gardens, which we make available to the public, it's a sign of my commitment to protecting the environment. We would not do this project if it hurt the monarch population. We would not do this project if it was going to hurt the environment. And I think the science shows that that it won't. We need housing. Our congregation needs a place to live. This project is not being made for people outside of town. This is being made for the people who have been in Santa Cruz for generations. And I'm very proud to be able to offer that service to them. And just with that said, I think this is a fantastic project. I'm so proud of what Opidin has done. I think they've done an extraordinary job balancing all the needs of the community, addressing the environmental concerns, and I just strongly ask that you support this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. I will go to our virtual attendee by the name of Dennis. Please press star six to unmute yourself. Dennis, are you able to press star six to unmute or the unmute feature on the webinar controls?
There.
There we go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, welcome.
Okay, sorry, sorry for the problem. My name is Dennis Hagan. I live in the three hundred block of Pelton Avenue, and I'd like to say I wholeheartedly support this project. It is well thought out. It is well planned. I would like to point out that the people who have spoken so far and opposed to it did not live in the neighborhood during the Gateway School residency at this project, where we had hundreds of car trips per day back and forth. Pelton is a busy, active area. Surfers coming in and out all the time during last weekends, festival or craft flair at Lighthouse Field. We had parking everywhere throughout this neighborhood. That is part of living by Lighthouse Field. Again, this project is going to have so much less of an impact on the neighborhood than the Gateway School did. Please don't oppose this project. It is very important. It's very good. And many seniors in Santa Cruz, fifty percent of the people in Santa Cruz are homeowners in the city. When when they get old and need assistance assisted living, you sell your home, and that's how you afford assisted living. It is not something that's cheap. It's not, unfortunately, something that everyone can obtain here in the United States. But this is a good, good, solid project. Please support it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I'd like to invite our next person in person. Hi, welcome.
My name is Blaine Hallie, mayor and city council, and I'm here to support this project completely, and and I'm a little nervous, and I tell me how much time I have. There's a clock running. I want to try to stay.
Two minutes.
Okay, that's very little time. I've got more to say than that. My family, I've been coming here since the seventies. My family lived eight twenty Pelton for two years. Bryce Morgan were ambassadors for the city of Santa Cruz, and I have been, and I actually work for AmeriCorps now. I'm a senior companion, and, you know, there's nothing like the area that that this is. And I've just family and friends through the years have come here to see the butterflies, to see the wildlife, see the ocean. The shrine itself is open for everybody to go there. It's open for everybody, and this is just a very, very special thing that I I want to see this go forward. I've looked at the plans, and I know that it's the best that we can do, and I'm very proud of it. I'm proud to stand up before you, and I, you know, I I think I'm just going to cut it short. I wish I could answer questions. I just, I I hope that I come across. I just very, very much want you to go forward with this and for it to be done. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I'm going to invite the next person in person.
Hi, I've lived.
Can you adjust the microphone? Sorry to interrupt. Thank you.
Hi, I've lived at one oh five Eucalyptus Avenue for twenty years. I was a direct neighbor across the street from one twenty-six Eucalyptus when Gateway School was there. It was very nice to have the school there. Was there traffic? Of course there was. However, the weekends, there was no traffic. Summertime, there was no traffic. Christmas time, there was no traffic. So there was an end to the cycle. With a assisted living home, which I have worked at, I have worked at Kindred, which is on Capitola Road, there is constant traffic. It never ends. There are three shifts a day. I know what it's like to be at a place like that. It is busy, busy, busy. Also, the butterflies cannot be contained just to Lighthouse Field. They flutter places. And all and so thinking that, oh, the entrance over there is far enough away from them, that's not really how it works. This is nature we're talking about. And also, the butterfly will be listed as federally endangered in twenty twenty-four. Hopefully, we'll have enough that'll make it until then. So I am not in, I am not against assisted living. I think the project needs a lot more in-depth research, especially where traffic is concerned. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. I will go to our next virtual attendee. The name is Keith Higgins. Press star six to unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi, yes, welcome.
Hi, my name's Keith Higgins. I'm the traffic engineer for the project, and I'm going to make my comments really short because I don't have anywhere near enough time to respond to all the traffic comments that have been made. But I'll just say I've been working around Santa Cruz for over four for about forty years. I've done projects all over the city. I've done many, many senior housing projects, assisted living projects all over the central coast. I actually worked for on projects at Gateway School. I have been inside Gateway School when it was operational. I've been there during pickup and drop-off operations when it was there. We did counts at its new location at Natural Bridges School for this traffic study, so we get accurate comparisons. And that used to generate about seven hundred, almost eight hundred trips per day, and this project will generate about two hundred, two hundred and fifty trips per day. I did annualized averages of trips from Gateway School, accounting for summer vacations, and the traffic is still much, much less on an annual annualized basis with this project than Gateway School. We've done parking studies, and it is true that when we did the original count back in November, I guess that was twenty twenty, we didn't really have much choice because if we're called to do a traffic study in November and the report's due in January, you can't wait till the summer to do the counts. We had to do the counts during the window that we had our contract. But we did supplemental studies. We did a study on July fourth, that was dated July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, and I'm going to run out of time. I'm trying to talk fast. And we did use the cellphone data, and were able to come up with annualized. And I'll stop there, but I'm available for any questions you might have on the traffic. And I could go into a whole lot more detail to respond to a lot of.
Thank you for your comment. I'll invite the next member of the public in person. Hi there.
Hi, my name is Russell Wise, and my family has lived on Laguna Street for over thirty-five years. I have a couple of comments. Santa Cruz is not lacking in assisted living facilities. We recently placed a family member in assisted living with memory care in two facilities in the county. There was no waiting in either facility. We also investigated a number of others, and there was no waiting there either. The proposed development will be an exclusive facility for wealthy people who can afford to live next to West Cliff. Second comment, the service entrance for the development should be from West Cliff through the Obleitz property. The Obleitz own the development parcel and will get substantial income from the development. Eucalyptus Street neighbors and parkers along Pelton Street get nothing and should not be burdened with the traffic and noise. A fire department only access could be available from Pelton Street. And actually, if it was connected to the Obleitz property, the fire trucks wouldn't have to back out or anything like that. The proposed development, in my view, is too large, and I think other people's view as well. If there were fewer than fifty units and an adjusted development footprint, I think there would be much more enthusiasm for the project. It's not that we're totally against it, but it's, I think, oversized and just not planned the way it needs to be. Please support the neighborhood's concerns. Thank you.
I will invite our next member of the public in person.
Hello.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Dennis Regan, and I'm at one oh one Eucalyptus and been there for actually thirty-seven years. My comment really has to do with the enormity of this project. It's very hard to visualize, and I really think before anything goes any further, we need to put balloons up. We need to do some things in the neighborhood so that people that aren't privy to being able to come to the city council meetings, because there's a very small distribution of mailings. Very small area. When I talk to people that are two or three blocks away, they have no idea that this is even going on. So I think that that has to be done, just to give an idea to the neighborhood what this is going to look like, what kind of visual impact is it going to have in, you know, what is really a beautiful little area. And many, many people have said many things about the concerns that I have other than that. I just wanted to bring it out that we have to really look at the enormity and the size of this structure. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I will now bring it to one of our virtual attendees, Carlos Valdez. Go ahead and press star six to unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hi, good night, everyone. Good night, Mayor and city council members. My name is Carlos Valdez. I'm a field representative for Carpenter's Local Union, five oh five. I'm here to talk about prequalification language and some of its benefits. I'm going to begin with apprenticeship. The structured apprenticeship programs are a proven escalator to the middle class, training tens of thousands of Californian residents every year, and not cost to taxpayers. Because of increased wages and lack of student debt, construction apprenticeship can be a better option for many young people that are undergraduate program. Policies such as prequalification helps helps to ensure that contractors hire apprentices and are doing their part to build our community's construction workforce. Healthcare, one out of four construction workers in California like health insurance. That's two and a half times the rate for all Californian workers. Nearly fifty percent of construction workers rely on some form of public assistance. The lack of stable healthcare is a main factor that keeps workers away from the industry, leading to the labor charges that we are seeing in residential construction. Local hire, across state, major projects often import an out-of-area or out-of-state workforce instead of training and building a local construction workforce. Local hire policies help ensure that new development benefit all members of the community. So short words is prequalification language is a need that benefit all of us. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. I'd like to welcome. I'd like to welcome our next member from here in person.
Hi, my name is Kathy Pappas, and I am, my granddaughter is the fifth generation, born on the west side. My grandmother was born in the early 1900s, and so we've lived in the neighborhood for all these generations. And we just wanna say that we're really in support of this project. We think, you know, having almost all of my relatives still live in town, that's a good thing and sometimes a bad thing. But we all live very close to this area, and we just, I know about senior living. We know about traffic. We're business owners, and that's just kinda Santa Cruz. And I know you all know that, because you all live here and you all know that. So, don't say anything new, but there are a lot of people in support of the project, and it is expensive. There's traffic on summer days, in the middle of summer, weekends, everything. So there's all kinds of things that I know that you've taken into consideration, and I appreciate it, all the work that you've done in all the different areas, because there are so many different areas that need to be addressed. And I think you guys did a really good job. I appreciate the first report that she gave. It's so thorough. And so, I've heard that a couple of times, and she was very good, I thought. And so I just wanna say that we're in support of this for a lot of different reasons, and thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I'd like to invite the next person here in person. Hi there.
Good evening, council. My name is Ralph Mayberg, and I'm very happy to be here in person in this world of Rashomon. So I'd like to talk about a progression. When I first, as a neighborhood representative, began discussions with Roger Bernstein from Apodin, the, there were 100 units. They were reduced to 92. Traffic was taken off of Eucalyptus Street and addressed elsewhere. There used to be deliveries, et cetera. Both the O'Blades and Apodin came up with a solution in which commercial traffic could come off West Cliff and then return to West Cliff. We advocate that route and want it actually increased because of monarch butterfly habitat protection. So I would definitely make that point over here. But the project was reduced to 76 units, primarily to accommodate a lower density, greater setbacks. I will say that I've had deliberations with developers, and Roger Bernstein was conflict adverse and truly tried to accommodate specific neighborhood concerns and general community concerns. Whether they have all been addressed is obviously in the province of the council. We did not touch affordability. In terms of traffic, it would really be great for monarch protection, and we know they're endangered. No matter what the current status is, it's heading there. We know that. And any person who's been in Santa Cruz and seen the population dwindle and then just managed to survive know how precious this is. We need to afford the butterflies maximum protection. The only way we can add to what already has been recommended by the planning commission is ingress. And unfortunately, that's through the O'Blades property. I know they would like to have some clarity for lots of reasons and not have traffic go through their property, but it did with Gateway School. This is a much reduced version of that. It offers protection to the butterflies, and it suggests a pattern that I think this council needs to think about in the future. If West Cliff is turned into a one-way, then city council needs to keep options open on how this project is reached from West Cliff. Thank you very much.
That concludes our virtual attendees, so I'd like to invite our next in-person member of the public. Yes, welcome. Thank you.
Is it low enough? Hi, my name is Barry Michelle, and I live in the house next to, on 140 Pelton, only house on that block. And it just feels really huge, and over the COVID time and not all being able to meet, I feel like the communication is still, like, kinda, it's not coming together completely for me. But it just really feels like a huge project for that area. But, and I also really care about the butterflies, and I care about whether I'm gonna be able to even live in my house for the time it's being built, but that's just me and my neighbor. I worry about them too, all the different neighbors. So I'd like to have more time to talk while we can actually speak to each other with us having an open meeting instead of meeting through Zoom. I haven't seen many of my neighbors for a long time, only the ones right close to me. So, thank you very much, and thank you for all your work. Kinda believe all the work. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. The next person, please step forward. Hi there, welcome.
I'm Sean Medved. I live at 112 Eucalyptus.
Can you adjust the microphone, please?
My house is directly impacted on two sides, so I've been involved with the developers and the community. And the one thing that I wanna bring up is that this access on Pelton is really important. And so it really needs to be looked at close, because what it's gonna do is all of the things that have been raised, from butterflies to traffic, as it spins, spills into the neighborhood, all of us neighbors are gonna be even more impacted than we already are by this massive construction and 76 units. It's almost unfathomable that we have a project this large in that neighborhood. I mean, it's, I would never believe that this would be, we'd be at this point. But the O'Blades and the father spoke about how they really want it here, and it's for the community. So if it's for the community, let's have them take a little bit more responsibility with that traffic flow. They already have a gigantic parking lot with two gigantic entrances. That parking lot is often empty. We all live here, we've seen it. And if they can take that impact, I think that would go a long way with showing, you know, you know, good accord with the neighbors and taking the impact away. It makes sense for everything, and it really needs to be looked at further. So that's my point. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Hi, please step forward. Welcome.
My name is Paul Brown. I've lived here in Santa Cruz since the late 1970s. I would probably die here. I love Santa Cruz, and, but I think, taking into account that we are all, the town is growing. There's gonna be more and more people, more and more people in need of these services. Even if there's ample room right now at these facilities, it's definitely not gonna stay that way. There's gonna be more and more people that need that kind of care. And why would we wait until there are no facilities available or that there are very few? And it's, you know, very stressful to even find a place. So I'm in favor of it, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. We have a virtual hand that popped up, so I will go out to our virtual attendee, Ryan Meckel.
Hey, good evening, council. I just wanted to briefly call in in support of this project and in support of the staff's recommendation. It seems like this developer has been very attentive to the neighbors. Since the project was initially proposed, they've eliminated what would have been a third story, made the building a bit smaller, and changed the design of the project as well. I think this is something that Santa Cruz really needs. I think we need senior housing. And as they said earlier, they already have a list of interests. So this is clearly something that the community wants and that the community needs. As people grow older, they're gonna need assistance living. Not everybody will, but certainly a lot of people may. And this is a great opportunity for them to downsize their homes, maybe move into an area that's certainly beautiful with the amenities that they need as they age. So I just hope you'll accept the staff's recommendation and support this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I'm not seeing any other hands virtually. And does that conclude our in-person public comments on the two appeals? Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your public comments. In addition to the public comments we heard, 14 emails were sent to citycouncil@cityofSantaCruz.com. I will now, each appellant will have five minutes to rebut issues raised during public comment. So I will call on Apodin's representative, who will have five minutes. This time cannot be used to raise new points or issues, but to rebut any comments in public comment.
Hi, Mayor Bruner. Thank you very much. And thanks to everyone for their comments. A couple of issues on the, on the traffic study. Just reiterating what Steph stated, that we all know that there's a lot of traffic on Pelton. The staff report, which was referencing our traffic study, mentioned that we're only gonna be adding 0.5 to 1% additional traffic onto Pelton. The other point, the other point that I think I just would like to make is that, per the amount of traffic that our project generated, per the IT manual and some other methods that a traffic consultant used, we did not need to do a traffic study. We were below the threshold that required a traffic study, but we elected to do one anyway, just to ensure that we were complying with all the requirements. Try to keep some of these, just responding to the parking. There was a question about parking, and it's gonna be spilling out onto, potentially onto Pelton Avenue and maybe around to Eucalyptus, et cetera. You know, one of the things we did is, after our first neighborhood meeting, we redesigned the project. We took all deliveries off Eucalyptus. And we, we actually, working with the O'Blades, who've been great partners, we, we are now taking all of our delivery access through the West Cliff Drive entrance, the existing entrance on West Cliff. And that was something that someone said, why don't they do that? We are doing that. So deliveries and commercial traffic will be using that driveway, and I think it's actually represented in the conditions of approval. Regarding parking, we are overparked per the city's requirement for our site. We have 42 parking spaces. In addition to that, the O'Blades have let us build eight additional parking spaces on their property for us to use as overflow parking. So we have more than adequate parking for our staff, for our residents. And I know someone said that, you know, assisted living residents will drive, or a lot of them drive, or some of them drive. I can assure you, very few of them drive. As I said, my mother is in an assisted living facility, a long way from here, unfortunately. And, you know, the assisted living residents at her community, I think almost none of them drive. I think a couple of them own cars, and the cars sit in the parking lot. Regarding our building size, as Ralph Mayberg mentioned, we, using, you know, the mechanism for the neighborhood meetings, based on listening to the neighbors, you know, we wanted to build a bigger project. We wanted to have independent living at our community. We downsized it. We had three stories. We downsized it again. We took, we took it down to two stories. And then through the, through the year and a half that it was in, going through the city process where they were analyzing any sequoia impacts on the project, we downsized it further. And we've reached a point where we, this is, this is the size of the community. This is barely the size that makes it effective for us to build. If we had to start reducing it further, bearing in mind that we're, we're the, our lease, and someone said we're leasing property. That's correct. We're leasing from the O'Blades. That was, that was set early on, and that hasn't changed. The cost of the lease hasn't changed. But what has changed is the cost of construction, as everyone probably is aware. Construction costs have gone up probably 30 to 40%. There was a construction person who called in about union construction. There is a, construction is very, very expensive. The other thing that's expensive is staff. You know, there's a, there's a staff problem here, and, and we like to pay a decent salary, a decent wage for our staff. We like to, we like to bring on our staff members, and we like to retain our staff members. And if we don't pay a decent salary for our staff, they will leave, and they will go somewhere else where they can make a decent salary. And these things cost money. The other thing is, because of the requirements of the, of the city and the neighborhood, and because we want to build a quality product, that product is very costly. So I just wanted to make some of these points, that we need the 76 units to make this project work. Let's see, I think, oh, there was one other point. And, you know, Sean Medved was up here, and he was talking about the project and the size. You know, I just wanna mention, I have actually met with Sean, you know, one of the things that we did, and I made this, because I'm a neighbor, I made this a, an ex, a big part of what I did. I met with neighbors individually, and I met with Sean individually several times. And, and I'm sure he can attest, we have made probably half a dozen or maybe more revisions to our project to, to reduce the impact on Sean and to make it a better project for him and his wife. So just wanted to mention that. Thank you very much. Our whole team is here for questions, too.
Thank you. I would like to call on Ann Siegel. You will have five minutes to rebut any issues raised by appellant number one and/or during public comment. And please note, this time cannot be used to raise new points or issues.
Thank you. I don't have a team. I'm here by myself. I'm new, but that doesn't mean I don't care. I care tremendously, which is why I'm here. I'm asking you to table this. This has been rushed. It was busy, busy, busy two and a half years ago. I've never met Mr. Bernstein. I never participated. There's new people who live on Pelton. There's new communities. Why is this thing being rushed through? Why can't it be tabled? Why can't we have an environmental impact study? And I'm new. I found this location for seniors, or everybody cares, and we wanna best for our seniors, in a tsunami zone. The Coastal Commission Executive Director has issued a memorandum in 2022 that said, if you cannot guarantee, guarantee there is no risk to people in a flooded area, you cannot build in that area. No one has said, oh, there's no worry about this. We're just gonna pretend it doesn't happen or hope it doesn't. It's in a tsunami area. I'm scared, and I'm scared for the people who I'm here to advocate for, which would be the residents who live in there. So that's not just, it's not just something that needs to be ignored or go away. It requires assessment. It requires study. It requires time. You'll say, well, it's a new city council. Maybe that's the point. Another reason to put it off. This is a future project. There'll be other people on council who may need to be responsible for stewarding this project through. The traffic is concerned, parking's concerned, watermark, I know this is, but they just paid $17 million fine in kickbacks. Where's that message? There's, we need to table this resolution. The maps also show the fire trucks cannot get to the back end of the buildings, should there be a problem, should there be an emergency. Why is there a rush? How can we know that what you're doing is safe? And that's the responsibility that you have as city council, is we gotta make sure this is safe. What is the hurry? And they're saying, we wanna do this for the community. No one addressed the fact that they're refusing to allocate more for low income. No, we can't do that. We can do two people. Oh, yeah, well, thanks. What about the other people? We're supposed, the church got up and said, this is for the church. Yeah, if you happen to make, I don't know, 12, 15,000 a month? They never mentioned how much the cost is, except that it is, it is expensive. It is expensive. The key word here is fragile. The environment that we live in is fragile. Our ecosystem is fragile. The monarch sites are endangered. I don't care. Saying they're somewhat sensitive is like saying that they have bad manners. No, they're fragile. They're endangered. The neighborhood is fragile. Pelton Avenue as a road is fragile. I don't wanna see it paved. I bought there because it's charming and rough and rural and quiet. And, and the elderly people who are supposed to live in this place are fragile. I ask you, council, please table this. Let's get more information before authorizing it and bullying it through. We are fragile. We're not carrying, we're not crows that can survive on carrion. We're fragile. We're as fragile as the butterfly wings. So I urge you to reconsider signing that authorization, signing both of them. Are you sure that you can't demand that they provide low-income allocations? Because the sink, because there's a sink and a refrigerator in the room? Really? We have people who are living in less than that, and they don't have enough money to give to Santa Cruz to say, yes, we wanna meet all the needs of all the people, not just the ones who can afford to live here. We wanna give a gift. It needs more time. It needs more space. We need, and we need a environmental research that's viable and reliable and that has backbone. And I ask you to each have backbone. Table this. Ask for more investigation, so we don't have to take it to the Coastal Commission to have them do the de novo review, because you didn't consider tsunami, because you didn't- because you didn't consider the fact that there is an important sequoia evaluation that was not done independently and honestly. Thank you.
At this point now, we've concluded that part of the hearing and I will bring it to council for action and deliberation. Let's see, I see council member Calentari Johnson, you have your hand.
Thank you, mayor. I want to make sure you can hear me.
Yes.
Okay, I have a number of questions and some comments and potentially a motion to move forward. But can I ask my questions first?
Yes.
Does that work for the process?
Yes.
Okay. So maybe I'll ask my questions to staff first and then I have some questions for Mr. Bernstein. Ms. Siegel made some points around inadequate access for fire and that she'd spoken to some fire officials. So I wanted to see if staff could address the fire concern. And then if somebody could address the tsunami flood zone concern that was brought up a number of times, that would also be great. So let's start with those two questions and then I have just a couple more.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and start with the tsunami stuff and then do the fire afterwards. So regarding the tsunami zone, there's mapping in our local coastal program and also our general plan for tsunami inundation areas. The project site is not mapped for tsunami inundation in the local coastal program. It is partially mapped in the general plan mapping. So first of all, our SECO review did look at tsunami inundation. It found that there's no impact because the developed, the part of the site to be developed is not within that zone. And incidentally, I do want to just clarify that we have an 80-page environmental review document. So this conclusion that the, you know, the SECO, that it's exempt from SECO is not made lightly. That is in the packet. So I have a few other notes on the tsunami. So there are some general plan policies for tsunami inundation, but they do not relate to review of new development projects. They focus on warning and evacuation systems and emergency responses. Also, there are some zoning ordinance development standards regarding tsunami impacts, but those only apply to areas that are within a mapped flood zone for FEMA and the site is not within that zone. And then regarding fire access, I have been working pretty closely with Tim Shields in the fire department and he approved the fire access for the project as currently designed. I'm not sure what the appellant was speaking to about.
Okay.
He may be saying it wasn't adequate. Tim Shields is present if you would like to hear more from him or if he has more information to add to that.
That would be great if he could just chime in on that.
Good evening. Thank you, council member Calentari Johnson. Council members, so the fire access issue was specifically brought up with access off of West Cliff, ingress egress off of West Cliff. Current designs did not allow for appropriate fire turnaround or egress out of the site once we went in off of West Cliff. Fire stances, if they meet fire code requirements per the fire code, we would be okay with a West Cliff ingress egress. The current design off of Pelton, though it doesn't entirely meet the fire code explicitly, we made some concessions in terms of a wider access with a little bit extended of access in. But in terms of access egress, egress egress off of West Cliff, the applicant would just have to show a design that would meet the fire code requirement.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for that additional information. I see Lee is on. Did you want to add to that?
Thank you, council member Calentari Johnson. I was just going to add one bit to the response that Clara had about the tsunami area. And I was just going to share my screen quickly here because I did look at the general plan maps and they're at the citywide level. And so they're hard to decipher exactly, you know, where that boundary falls. So I took a look at the information. Hopefully you can see my screen here. This is the California Department of Conservation, Santa Cruz County tsunami hazard areas. And this is when you zoom into the site, this is Pelton Avenue here. And you can see that the tsunami inundation zone does cover the eastern portion of the site. That's what was specified in that, the 80 or so page environmental document that Clara referred to. That document also mentioned that with tsunamis, there's typically a substantial amount of lead time in terms of warning time that allows people to evacuate an area. As shown in that map from the Department of Conservation, it's not, it is adjacent to, but not directly in the tsunami hazard area. But nevertheless, there are those warning systems in place that allow for people to vacate the area if there is an expected tsunami.
Okay, great. Thank you. One more question for staff and then I have a couple of questions for Mr. Bernstein, if that's okay. Can you just reiterate the, well, I mean, it's in the agenda reports, not really a question, but I, well, okay. I want you to just go back and reiterate what the code states around the proposed inclusionary by the Planning Commission. If you could just restate that for us.
Sure, I could do that. Can I ask for clarification? You wanted me to reiterate what the Planning Commission had, how they had interpreted the code?
How they had interpreted and why our staff found that interpretation to be incomplete or incorrect.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. So it was regarding this alternative methods to comply with inclusionary housing requirements. So the way that the code reads is that of the first highlighted part here, an applicant may propose to satisfy the inclusionary housing requirements of this chapter by providing congregate living units or assisted living units. And then second, if the approval body determines that a proposed residential development includes congregate living units or assisted living units, the following alternative requirements shall apply. And then it explains that 15% ratio for the congregate care units. So what the Planning Commission did was they just took this second sentence, if the approval body determines, so they decided to make the determination on their own that this project includes congregate living units or assisted living units. And so they applied this 15% inclusionary requirement. But this first sentence was, I guess it's the second sentence and that was actually the third. But this first, sorry, the previous sentence was, I guess, disregarded. But really, the way the code reads is that both of these things need to be satisfied in order for this 15% alternative requirement to kick in. So first, the applicant would need to propose to satisfy the inclusionary housing requirements with this alternative method of compliance. And then if they propose that, at that point, the approval body would determine whether there are indeed congregate living units or assisted living units that would then qualify for that lower 15% inclusionary rate as opposed to the standard 20%. So in this case, the applicant did not propose to do this alternative method. They just chose to do the standard compliance, which is 20% of the dwelling units, which are the units with the kitchens.
And this was information that the Planning Commission had?
Correct, yes.
Before they made their decision? Okay.
Yes, this was in the analysis in the staff report.
Okay, thank you. And then I just have two questions from Mr. Bernstein. If you could come up. If you, Mr. Bernstein, if you wanted to speak to the community engagement, could you just very briefly in 30 seconds tell us the, how long you've been working on this project and what specific actions you took for community engagement?
Sure, yeah. We've been working on this project for about three years now. We had our first neighborhood meeting, which was attended by over 100 folks. It was a live meeting, which was nice, in early 2020. Based on the feedback from the neighborhood, we made very significant changes, including reducing the size of the building. But one of the most important things is we had made an assumption because the lighthouse, the school that was on, excuse me, on Eucalyptus Avenue was using Eucalyptus as a loading area. We made an assumption that we could use that for our loading. That was, the neighbors did not like that. And so because of that, we closed all loading activities on Eucalyptus Avenue and moved our loading access to come in through West Cliff. And then we moved our loading area to the southeast corner of our building, which was the area furthest away from all residences. Then we had a second neighborhood meeting. We presented that. Unfortunately, that was a virtual meeting, but it was also attended by, I would say, 60 to 80 neighbors. And it was extremely well received, the changes that we made. Based on the reception that we got there, we then submitted our project with a formal application to the city. But over the next year and a half, including up until even several weeks ago, we have continued to work with neighbors. I think Ralph Myberg mentioned that, you know, he's a neighborhood representative. I've been meeting with Ralph probably every other month for a year and a half, getting feedback from neighbors. I've also met with individual neighbors, not all neighbors, not every neighbor, because I met with neighbors who reached out to me. I walked the neighborhood and if people came up to me, I answered questions. But we continue to make changes and we downsized the project again. And at that time, we reduced, we eliminated the third floor and went to a two-story building. And by eliminating the third floor, we eliminated, and it was unfortunate, our independent living units, which also not only made the building smaller, but reduced the impacts and reduced the parking requirements and traffic.
Thank you. And then I just, my other question is around the inclusionary unit. So it's clear that you did not propose an alternative method. And so you chose to go with a 20% inclusionary of the units that are dwelling units, as we just heard again from the staff. And my assumption is that if your appeal was denied, you can speak for yourself, but would this project be feasible if we move forward with Planning Commission's recommendation with the additional?
It would not. We could not move forward with this project.
So my next question, maybe last question to you, is with a 20% inclusionary of the 13 units that qualify, it's 2.6, am I right? 2.6?
That's correct. Yeah, it rounds up 2.6, that's correct.
And so we're required, or we typically round down, so there's two units. Would it be feasible for the project to round up and make it three units? Is that something that you would consider?
Yeah, we could consider that. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions. Mayor, I have some comments and then a motion, if that's okay.
Okay.
Okay. And I know others will probably want to speak, so I'll keep it quick. So I really want to just appreciate everyone who came out tonight, either virtually or in person. I'm sorry that I'm not there in person. I want to appreciate and thank everyone who's been engaged in the last couple of years. This is also my neighborhood. I'm very familiar with the area and take my dog out for a walk there almost daily. So I understand the concerns around impacts. And it's very clear to me that this applicant has worked extensively with the neighbor, has, as was just reiterated, really met a lot of the neighbors' needs. We heard from some speakers that we have a tremendous need for senior housing. As I've talked to community members, I hear a lot from people who are my age in their 40s that they have parents living in single-family homes that they cannot leave because they don't have another place to go to. So if they leave their single-family homes, this will open it up to families of three, four, five. And they would get the assisted living that they need. So there's a need in the community. I think that this is the way that we want to roll out projects, is to engage deeply with the neighbors, is to make changes, is to bring in experts from the field, the biologists that were named by Mr. Bernstein. I know some of them. They're very reputable experts in our local community that have been doing the work. So these are the aspects of a project. Unfortunately, not all projects that come to us go through this process, but these are the aspects of a project that will make it a successful project. And I'll just briefly say that it's clear from the staff report and the presentation, what we heard from Mr. Bernstein, that this alternative method that the Planning Commission ignored, that the alternative method can't be applied unless the applicant proposes it. And the applicant did not propose it. And we just heard from Mr. Bernstein that the project would die. It would be killed if we imposed this condition. So if that's the intent of the commission to kill the project, that's another story. I don't think it necessarily is. And I think this is a good project. There's a need in our community. So with that, I would like to move staff recommendation, and I can read it if you'd like, with the added condition to round up the 20% inclusionary from two units to three units. So I can, would you like me to read the staff recommendation, mayor?
Yes, so, yes. We have a motion by council member Calentari Johnson.
So I'll, oh, sorry, go ahead. I'll move resolution denying the appeal of Ann and Robert Siegel and upholding the appeal of Roger Bernstein, thereby adopting the resolution approving the non-residential demolition authorization permit, sequential lot line adjustment, special use permit, coastal permit, design permit, inherited tree removal permit, to reconfigure five lots into two, demolish two existing school buildings, approximately 28,470 square feet, remove six heritage trees and construct a 76 unit, including 13 full dwelling units, senior housing facility as approved by the Planning Commission, but the deletion of condition of approval 60, and then with the addition of a condition of approval of adding one extra affordable unit, making it a total of three.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Vice Mayor Watkins is our second. Okay, does that conclude? We have a motion on the table.
Thank you.
And I will now bring it out for further discussion. Council member Brown, you had your hand up.
Well, I actually had a question for Mr. Bernstein as well. My question is trying to get a little bit more detail on the flat out. If you had to comply with a higher inclusionary percentage, would the project be feasible? My, the answer is obviously no, because you wouldn't be here appealing if that weren't the case. But I wanted to, I wanted to see if I could just hear a little bit more about that challenge for you. Because I'm still weighing the way that the Planning Commission interpreted our rules. And I would argue that there's some gray areas in our zoning code that leave this a little bit more open to interpretation than what I'm hearing. So what I'd like to know is, in your analysis, that two units out of 76 was going to meet the minimal requirements, did you contemplate additional units at all at any point? Additional inclusionary units at any point? And I'd just like to understand better how it's impossible. Like what I'm hearing is it's impossible to do this unless, you know, without, I guess, three now. So, you know, instead of two and a half, three units on a 76-unit project. And so I also, I'm trying to understand the, you could just tell me more about how that will make it infeasible to do any more affordability. I, my goal in being here is representing the public interest, I believe. It's in the public interest to maximize our affordable units in these projects. We don't have, you know, a lot of tools for that. And this is one of them, our inclusionary ordinance, which has been eroded. I'll leave it there on that one. But can you just talk a little bit more about what makes it infeasible to, you know, provide additional affordability and like at what level? And then I'm also trying to understand, if they're not congregate units and they're not dwelling units and they're not assisted living units, what are the other units going to be? And those are all just exempt. I'm still unclear about that. So if you could help me understand.
Let me try to explain. First of all, that we did have more affordable units in the project when we had more units overall. I think at one point, we had four. I think at one point, we had four affordable units when we had a project of ninety-two, ninety-two total units. What we do when we, when, you know, and it's, there's, there's a lot that goes into this and I, I, you know, I'm a, I'm, I run our construction group. I'm not a finance expert. But what we do is, when we run a pro forma, we back into, sometimes we'll back into, into what we, we can, we can build in order to give, make a project have a feasible return. We are not a non-for-profit company, but we're not looking to try to, you know, pillage the community. We, we need a project that's going to give, it's going to give us a decent return. One of the things that we have to do is we also have to appease, just like all of you do. We have to appease our banks, our lenders and financial partners, et cetera. So, you know, the project, the project has to be feasible. What we did on this particular project is we did, we did what they call like a reverse engineering. And I, I use engineering because I'm more, I'm an architect, actually. So I have to think in those terms. But we reverse engineered it so that we figured out that we could, we could reduce the project down to essentially seventy-four market rate units and two affordable units. And the project still worked. What we did do is we did that calculation about a year and a half ago. Maybe, maybe a little less, maybe a year and a quarter ago. But we, what we did not take into account was a tremendous escalation in construction costs. Really, you know, all things were equal, but construction costs continue to go up. You know, they went up, I think, I would say in last year, construction costs went up about thirty percent. Now they, you know, some things came down a little bit, you know, the price of lumber came down a little bit. And so there were some things that started to balance out, but they did not. And typically, that's what I've seen through my many years of, of building, is, is they, they don't come back to their original cost. So in order to make the project work, we had to, we had to, we had to try to play this little game of, it's, I don't know if it's really called chess or, you know, whatever you would call it. We moved pieces around and we figured out that the, really, the only way we could make this work was seventy-four market rate units and two affordable units. And then we went to, and, and we actually, and we relied on, on staff and the city attorney advising us that we were meeting code. Then we went to the Planning Commission and the Commissioner Schifrin added this condition. So we immediately went back and we started doing the same thing, this reverse engineering to figure out, boy, can we, can we add all these units and still make it work? And we looked at it and, and to be honest, I mean, we, they approved the project. We didn't, we weren't about to try to appeal our own project if it worked. It, it didn't work. Financially, the returns weren't there. We wouldn't be able to go get a lender. We wouldn't be able to get a financial partner. And it would not, it would not work for us. So we did start looking at, you know, what, what might work. You know, could we add one? Could we add two? And unfortunately, the threshold was, we could potentially add one. Our hope, and, and you know, hope is a terrible strategy. I tell people that all the time. Our hope is that construction costs don't start, you know, escalating next year like they did last year. I don't think they will. It seems like things are starting to flatten out. I've talked to, I'm, I'm continuing, as I mentioned, I'm working with local contractors and I'm talking to them and they're telling me that the price of steel, the commodity prices are still down. What is, what has continued to go up is fuel costs and labor. Labor and fuel are still extremely expensive. Fuel's leveled out, labor has not. So, you know, construction costs are incredibly expensive. And unfortunately, we're, we're, we're at a position where, you know, I, I'm pretty sure we can make it work with three affordable units. I don't think we could make it work with anymore.
Okay, thank you for that. And my other question then just being, and again, maybe I'm just really dense. I've read through all these materials and I've really been trying. What are you calling those other units that are not considered residential? What are they going to be if they're not congregate and they're not dwelling units?
So we, we are, we are planning on building a community of assisted living and memory care units. You know, I don't know if it's the semantics of what, what we're calling them. My understanding is, based on the city, the city code, we were required to provide twenty percent of the, of units that would be, would qualify as dwelling units. And there were, there was a specific definition around what would qualify as a dwelling units and it had to, it related to kitchens. And then there was, there was a discussion with staff about what constitutes a kitchen. And there was two or more appliances and there was some other things. So, you know, we, and a lot of our communities, our assisted living communities, we don't have any kitchens. We might just have a refrigerator or just a microwave or just a sink. We elected to go ahead and, and try to put in these, you know, a couple of small kitchenettes, a few small kitchenettes, but it's really just two or more appliances on our, in, in these communities. Typically, most of our residents come down to the dining room for, for their meals. If they cannot, if for some reason they're sick, they're not ambulatory right now, they have their meals brought to their room. It's very rare that any of our residences, assisted living residents, prepare their own meals. They might heat something up in a microwave. They like to have a sink to wash their hands or wash a cup of, for a cup of tea, a cup of coffee, et cetera. So we're calling them assisted living and memory care. But I think our, our primary discussion with staff is, what is, what is the city charter? What does the city code require? And, and we were told early on that the way we interpreted the project was, was a code-compliant project. And we relied on that. And we were told that by the city attorney as well. And then that was continued to be, that was, that was continually reinforced down the line. So we relied on that to design our project.
Thank you. I, I appreciate it. I'm, I'm just going to say that I, I, I recognize the frustration in being told that you're compliant and then having these kinds of questions come up. This is not the first time that I have disagreed with the staff's interpretation of our inclusionary policies. So I'll just leave it there, but I appreciate you trying to help me understand the realities of your circumstances.
The reality is, I think we can do three units, whatever the, your policy states. That's, I think, that's probably the limit that we can do to make this project work for us. Thanks.
Does that conclude your questions? Councilmember Myers?
I'm, I'm looking at the, the site plan drawing. Can you describe a little bit better to me, where are people coming in and out of the driveway, in and out of the parking lot? Because I see, I'm looking at the drawing.
I have a site plan, if you could put it up.
Because it looks like.
I have a, I have a site plan of our project. It was on the, in the, that what I submit, sent to staff this afternoon.
Yeah.
It was the, it's a site plan. I sent two packets. There's a, there's, there's a site plan, not the addendum, the other one, the other packet.
Figure two and the.
There we go. So go forward, go forward a little more. Keep going. Next one. Right there. Okay. That's, that's our current site plan. That shows all of our current tweaks and changes that we made even after we submitted to, to the city. Right now, our primary access for vehicular access is off Pelton Avenue. It's the existing curb cut off Pelton. It's, it's, it's drawn in there in, in orange. You can see there on, on Pelton Avenue.
Yep.
That would be our, our primary access for, for vehicles into our parking lot. And then we have, we've added a paved drive that connects our parking lot with the O'Blades parking lot. And then you can see the sign that says added parking and access drive from West Cliff. Those are the eight parking spaces that we're, we've added. That area right now is dirt. So we've added those eight parking spaces. And then if you continue to go to the east, north is up the page, so it makes it pretty easy. If you continue to go to the east, there's an existing gate there on.
That's my, that's my question, is what's going to go on with that gate?
Yeah, so that, that's going to be our delivery entrance and exit.
And is that going to be open and closing just only for deliveries? Or is that going to be available for people to come in off of West Cliff?
It's really just for, it's for deliveries. It's for deliveries and commercial vehicles, so trash, deliveries, and, and potentially fire and ambulances could use that as well. An ambulance coming into the site could potentially use that.
And the, the entrance a little bit further north past the Meditation Garden, that typically, I live in the area too, so I, I know the area well. That typically is open because of the cafe. Do you imagine that is also going to be just remaining open during the day?
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't planned on using that access point at all. Again, we're, you know, as I mentioned earlier, we're going to have anywhere between twelve and eighteen staff members here. Most of our residents don't drive. We get a couple of deliveries a day. We get some visitors. All of you know that, you know, who have family members at, at these communities, you'd think they get a lot of visitors. They really don't. It's unfortunate, but they really don't. So, but the, the vehic, the vehicle traffic will come in and out off, off Pelton. And then we're going to have a sign on, in, facing our parking lot that's going to require our visitors and, and anyone, and staff members, anyone using that access point on Pelton to exit and make a left turn onto Pelton and head straight back out onto West Cliff. That way, they don't drive down Pelton, they don't add any traffic, even though there's almost no traffic from this community. They don't add any of our limited traffic westbound on, on Pelton. And they don't shine their headlights on the Butterfly Grove.
Okay. I, I guess my one consideration, I don't, I'm not, I don't think, I feel like I have to make this a condition of approval, but I hope there's evaluation, I guess, as, you know, as you continue through the, and if, and upon starting for the facility to open. I think this, this lower entry there, closer to the corner of West Cliff and Pelton, that's going to be gated. I have the feeling that will become a very popular way for people to come in and out of your facility potentially. Just my, my knowledge of living there for a long time is, you know, I, I'm not sure that people are going to make the turn on Pelton if they can, if they can potentially make, you know, a straighter shot right in off of West Cliff right before the stop sign. So I won't make it a, I won't change the motion to make it a condition of approval, but, you know, I, I think just for the staff's thoughts as you move forward through this, maybe give that some consideration. The, the main thing I've heard is, and I do see the issue there with the adjacency to the stop sign, but I'm just curious to see how all the parking and moving through the parking lot is going to work. But just, I'm, thank you for the explanation of the circulation.
No problem.
Thank you. Okay, so I have Councilmember Cummings and then Councilmember Goldar.
I don't really have, and again, sorry, I'm getting over a cold, so my voice is not that strong tonight. But I'm going to, I'd like to make a couple of comments on this. First, I just want to thank all the members of the public who came out to speak either for or against this project. But it's great for us to be able to hear your concerns, to be able to hear, hear all of you out as we deliberate on this item that's before us. You know, I'm not in opposition to the project, but I, I have some serious concerns with the affordable housing components and some of the impacts that have been brought up this evening. But in particular, to kind of what I've, I've been hearing in this discussion around the affordable housing, because it sounds like, you know, the, the city council is making a very strong effort at trying to maximize the amount of affordable housing because we are in a housing crisis in this community. And it sounds like what happened was that the developer talked about what they could make happen, went to the staff and then the staff said, okay, well, based on what you can do, you can provide us with two affordable units and then the rest of this is market rate, which what we should be doing is trying to figure out how we can maximize the amount of affordable housing. And if it turns out there's not enough money, you can't make a pencil out, well then we should be working together and figure out how we can finance and find funding for those other units. And I'll just say, you know, I'm not a lawyer, but reading the code that's before us and going over that language multiple times, I'm really concerned if this gets appealed to the Coastal Commission or if somebody wants to, you know, bring forward this language because it's pretty clear that there is no requirement that the applicant, they can, they may propose to satisfy the inclusionary requirements by providing congregate units or assisted living units, but it's not a requirement for the approval body to determine that proposed residential development includes congregate living units or assisted living units. And in the maps that have been shown and what we have in our, in our agenda packet says that there are assisted living units in this project. And, you know, it clearly says right here that the floor plan shown on the project plans includes studio, one-bedroom and two-bedroom units and includes fifty-nine assisted living units with a total of seventy-six beds. If we apply the fifteen percent inclusionary, that's nine units that would be affordable. And that's what we need in our community. And for something that's being built on church property and the commitment that the church has to serving people who are experiencing poverty and people with low income, my expectation would be that we're trying to maximize the amount of affordable housing that's going into this project. So I, based on the, the, our current code and what we have before us, I actually agree with the Planning Commission that nine units would be appropriate. And if that's not something that can pencil out, we should figure out how we can make that work because that's what we need. We have many homeless people who are seniors, who are never going to work again, living on our streets and nowhere for them to go. And they cannot afford the market rate rents that would be in this type of facility. So, you know, I, I hope we can, I mean, I appreciate the effort to try to increase it by one, but that's not enough with where we're, where we're at in this community right now. And so, and I'm sorry if the staff misled you on that. And maybe the staff is right and this will go through and there won't be an impact. But I think that that is up for legal interpretation because while staff might have their way of interpreting it, I think if this were in a court, it could be argued both ways. So I'll just leave my comments there. And, yeah, I'll just leave my comments there at this time. Thank you all.
Thank you, Councilmember Goldar.
Thank you. So I just would like to, to speak to the, one of the appellant, Ms. Siegel, in that I don't, I didn't feel like the staff just presented us with this and that, and that we're supposed to sign kind of on the dotted line. It's something that had been in the works for several years. And I think of all the projects that have come before us, they've had the maximum amount of community outreach with the neighborhoods and with the council. And as soon as I was on council, or maybe even before, I met with the developers and they asked my opinion, asked what the community would think, asked. They were really receptive. And I saw it as a back and forth, as opposed to the project, it's not a, you know, a senior facility, but the one that I keep using as an example over in Seabright, where they slammed all those condos onto that single-family residence and then the neighbors were worried about parking and now they're turning the barrage into an ADU. Like, that's the opposite type of development. And so with, with this, you know, I've seen a lot of churches also being redeveloped around town. We've seen some converted to housing. We've seen the one at the circles that's maybe going to be housing, we'll see, right? And so I understand that these are getting redeveloped and people would prefer to have open space and prefer to have other things there. But I, you know, I'm also a realist and know that, you know, land use changes over time. And in real estate, the first three rules were location, location, location. Yes, of course, it's going to be an expensive place to live. But I agree with my colleagues in that hopefully it'll turn over some single-family residences that people will be able to rent or buy. A concern that I have in regards to the affordability piece and the inclusionary is that in order to make it pencil out, if you will, those market rate units will be up. And then the house, the, that they rented out Grandma's house is now going to be rented for more to pay for that facility that they're inevitably going to need. And I do understand that there's, that not everybody will be able to afford this and that's really unfortunate. As soon as I was presented with the first meeting, I went and met with my rep, sells the extra insurance and I got long-term care insurance. So it's something that I could afford if I need or want, you know, for twenty dollars a month for now, the cost of a cup of coffee a day, right? And I know the other side where it's like, one of, one of my husband's grandparents had to be essentially destitute for Medicare to kick in and put her in a, a different facility than my grandma got put in because, you know, their life circumstances where she was able to rent out her house. So I totally get that. But I do think by and large, I agree with the staff's recommendation. I do think that there will be impact to the, to the, to the monarchs. I'm not stupid. Like, I can see that they're across the street, there will be impacts. But to the extent that this developer has really, I felt, put out tremendous effort in bringing this project forward, I'm inclined to support the staff's recommendation at this point as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Goldar and Vice Mayor Watkins.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I won't repeat, I think, what some of my colleagues have already stated. I appreciate all who have been here. I also appreciate all of the outreach and work that's gone into this. I do know that there's been a series of reductions, which I, I know density is, is of a concern and keeping that feeling consistent with the community is also a priority. And I know that comes also at a cost for additional units potentially being more affordable. I think, you know, my, my comment, I guess, or my question maybe is, I think, you know, my, my comment, I guess, or my question maybe is, you know, in terms of the legal opinion, we do have our legal person here, and, and I would like to have an opportunity to hear from Cassie.
Hi, I was wondering if I was gonna get called on, so thank you.
You're getting crammed.
Yes, and I, you know, I appreciate this discussion, and appreciate, you know, Councilmember Brown and Councilmember Cummings' interpretation as well. What's, I think, could be emphasized a little bit more is that the section that the planning commission relied upon is in this other section that's entitled "Alternatives." It has, excuse me, it has a bunch of other alternatives listed, like things that we consider, like the in-lug fee, like dedicating land, so all these things that we consider to be alternatives to fulfilling the requirement, and it's in that section. And so, you know, I do think that if a court were to look at this, and I tried to look at it, you know, fairly, I think that if a court looked at it, they'd say, well, it's in this alternative section, it's got this kind of language that talks about "may propose", and yes, it does have the shallow language that comes in later, and I know that's what Councilmember Cummings and Councilmember Brown and the planning commission that they looked at, but all things considered, it looks like it's an alternative. And, and I think, I think that's the way, most likely, a court would come down on it, especially when we're talking about, you know, the public, we all need to rely on, you know, what is the cleanest, clearest interpretation of a statute, right? And so, especially when something is gonna cost somebody a significant amount of money, I think a court would say, you know, this should be very clear, right? If we're gonna require an applicant to, you know, put this much extra money, this much extra affordable units, it should be a little bit more clear than it is. So, that's kind of the way I came down on the legal analysis of it.
Well, I really appreciate that clarification and that explanation of your process to land where you did. I think that's really helpful information. I guess just in conclusion, I know we've heard of, you know, anecdotal circumstances and issues around people needing this type of living, and the reality is that the data actually substantiates that as well. We have an aging population, like many communities, and we have a declining population of young people and working people being able to stay here. So, having a diversity of housing options, including housing for our elderly folks who are aging in our community, is really critical to maintaining the fabric and the diversity of our community that we wanna see. So, I feel really happy to see this type of housing brought to our community for a number of reasons, and given all of the conversation, we'll too be supporting the, the motion on the floor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Watkins, and I know Councilmember Goldar had one more question, you had your hand raised.
So, I did forget to ask, and I don't know if fire's still on, but I was curious which fire station would have this facility in their first due, and if you've thought about which way you would enter, whether it would be via West Cliff or Pelton, if they were coming from Almar or from downtown. There you are. Hi, Tim.
Hi. So, it would most likely be our downtown station, so we'd be coming down West Cliff, but, you know, we could never plan for any emergency, we don't know what direction we're gonna be coming from, and not only that, we don't know what direction we'll be leaving if there's another emergency that we have to leave. So, there's, there's no guarantees on, on where we'll come in or leave from the facility itself. Our concern is, once we're in the facility, that we can easily get out of the facility. That's, that's our main concern.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to make a couple of comments, just to be very clear about where I'm at on this. So, one, I wanna thank the community for your comments, for participating in this conversation, for being engaged. I wanna thank the developers for working with the community to make adjustments. I mean, I, that is really a model for how, you know, we hope things happen when new developments come in, there's always gonna be an impact, there's always gonna be opposition, and I appreciate that you've been willing to have those conversations and make adjustments. And so, I'm, I wanna say that I will be voting no on the motion, because I, I just fundamentally disagree with the way our inclusionary housing rules have been interpreted, in this case and, and others. And I'm, I'm, I believe that we need to do better, and that's not, you got the, the story and the interpretation of the rules that you got, so, you know, I understand that, but I, I just fundamentally disagree with those, and I think that we, as a city council, have a responsibility to be clear about the need for affordable housing, meaning we have to be proactive about that, and, and, and help us figure out, if our inclusionary ordinance is unclear in some places, which it apparently is, how we address that. You know, people, developers want a clear set of rules, and the way that we operate, it seems there is always some interpretation, and, and I've talked to attorneys who have a very different interpretation, and I don't know that this one's gonna get resolved in court, but I wish you luck at the Coastal Commission, because I think that's where we're headed. I'll leave it there, and, you know, just ask us to please take this seriously, so that we don't every time come to this point where it's like, oh, we, you know, we figured out that the least number of affordable units, we figured out a way to make sure that the least number of affordable units is required. That is what I see as a pattern, it's happening here, I can't support it.
All right. I would just like to add a couple of comments. Thank you to my colleagues, and thank you to all the community members. I know that several of the emails that came in, as well as other community members that were not able to come, kind of reached out, and this clearly is not a hearing on the project itself, but a hearing on the appeals that were presented, and the appeal of the inclusionary units, an appeal of the planning commission's decision of the inclusionary units. I don't think that, that, to me, it was very clear interpretation that if the twenty percent was not met, then here are its alternative options, and the twenty percent inclusionary was met. And thank you for entertaining, rounding up of the affordable units, because yes, we need all types of housing in our community, and three is better than none. So, I don't think that, that was proven, and so, I, I will be supporting that. And then in terms of the other appeal with the traffic study and the monarchs, you know, this is, I really appreciate Ann Segal, your thoroughness, your persistence, your passion, your care, and that we have a community that is aware and really fights for our environment. I think that's one of the reasons why I love living here, is we have such a beautiful nature and environment, and people who care to protect it. And I think, at this point, I, I, I'm not seeing any endangerment that was brought up in that appeal. So, I will be supporting this motion that's on the table. We have a motion by Calentari Johnson, and a second by Vice Mayor Watkins, and I'd like to ask the city clerk to please call roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Calentari Johnson?
Aye.
Goldar?
Aye.
Cummings?
No.
Brown?
No.
Myers?
I'm gonna vote for the motion, so I'm an aye, and I just, again, would ask the developer over time, as the facility opens, just to keep an open mind about how the circulation can work for the neighborhood as best as possible. So, I'm an aye. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Watkins?
Aye.
And Mayor Brenner?
Aye. The motion passes with five ayes and two noes, Councilmember Brown and Councilmember Cummings. Thank you, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.